At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands Commission to Order. The date is Wednesday, February 1st, 2023. The time is 7:05. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call?
Eileen McKean.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Jeffrey Nekio.
Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, and I just want to mention I have agendas up here for anyone that needs them, I've got some extras.
Going on to consideration of the meetings of January 4th, does anyone have any comments regarding the minutes? I do. In the category of violations and in the one regarding 67 Schoolhouse Road, when it goes on to talk, I think it should be in the minutes, that Mrs. Jurey specifically said she talked to Aaron O'Hare at Wallingford Inland Wetlands, which was the first time in any of the presentations that she gave, she said that. Previous time, she kept saying, "I talked to planning and zoning, I talked to planning and zoning." I think that belongs in the minutes.
Pardon me, where did you want it inserted?
Uh, somewhere on, let's see, on page eight? Somewhere, it's, oh, okay, page nine, the top of page nine. When she told there was no wetland violation or no wetlands, she said she had talked to inland wetlands there, and she specifically said she talked to Aaron O'Hare.
I believe it is stated properly.
I can't hear you.
I believe it is stated properly. Mrs. Jurey said, "It's up to Aaron O'Hare," she told us, "there was no wetland violation.
That's what Aaron said. That's not what Mrs. Jurey said.
No, what did she say, please?
Please use the microphone.
I'm trying. What did she say, please?
I think you should go back and look at the, either the video or the tape recording, but as I remember it, she said she called and specifically talked to inland wetlands. That I asked her, why did she call wetlands, or planning and zoning, and she says, "Oh, no, I called inland wetlands." So if you would refer back to the tape or the, either the video or the tape, and get some specific information in there on how that progressed, because I don't believe that she ever said that before, I believe she always said in the previous two meetings that she called planning and zoning.
Okay, I will obtain it from the video.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we'll table the minutes to the next, next meeting. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's an application from Choate School regarding a building they want to put up. At this time, I'm going to recuse myself from this public hearing, and I believe Debbie is also, is that correct?
Yes, I will recuse myself also.
And Nick Kerns will now be in charge to run the public hearing meeting.
Ready, Dennis?
It's about, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, for the record, this application is A-22-10.1, 59 North Elm Street, Choate Rosemary Hall, building construction. We will hear the applicant's presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to start the hearing by saying that we got all the proper notification was done by the applicant. My office did publish it in the Record Journal, as is required for this hearing. We got a number of letters in from the public over the course of the last two months. There are several documents that have come in since the initial application in November. All of these documents, the applicant has supplied copies, and all of these documents have been distributed to you in your packets that you get, also all the reports that I have written or some of the other agencies have written, and it's all in the record. Anything that's been handed in, any letters from the public, any comments from the applicant or comments from town staff, is all hereby entered into the record for the public hearing.
Okay, then the voting members tonight will be the two gentlemen on my right and the two ladies on my left, and myself, so there'll be five. Public hearing will, the public input will be after the presentation, and we'll let the applicant start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your records, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm, 721 Broad Street in Ameriden. I represent the owner and applicant. With me tonight is Patrick Durbin, Chief Financial Officer, Choate Rosemary Hall. He's sitting behind me in the first row, answer any operational questions this commission may have. Up at the easel is Brian Kay. He's part of a team from SLR. Brian, Tom Daley's to my left, and to my far left is Megan Raymond, who's the soil scientist, professional wetland scientist, to be making part of the presentation this evening. In terms of the parcel, just by way of overview at the beginning, and Brian will go through this, it's an odd-shaped piece of property. It's actually 96, a little over 96 acres in size. It runs from the corner of North Elm and Christian to an area behind the condominiums on Constitution Street. The project area, and again, Brian and Tom, they can all go through this, but the project area encompasses about six and a half of those 96 acres. The proposal is to construct a new admissions building. It's about 14,000 square feet in size, which will be located above an underground parking garage, which is a novelty for me, honestly. That garage will be under the admissions building and partially located under a green roof, which will be explaining the nature of that green roof. That parking garage will have about 70 spaces. With the advent of the parking garage, approximately 55 to 60 surface parking spaces, which are more close existing to Gunpowder Creek, and all this is part of the presentation, Mr. Chairman, that those parking spaces will be removed that are closer to the creek, and they'll be restored to grass. In your environmental planners' reports, the several that have been provided to you by Ms. O'Hare, the jurisdiction is defined in those reports. We are increasing or expanding the surfaced area in excess of the 10,000 square feet for your jurisdiction. It's about 11,695 square feet of net new impervious area. That's 11,695 square feet on the 96-acre parcel, which is a little over 4 million square feet. Also, construction flows will discharge from temporary sediment traps to Gunpowder Creek, and again, that'll be part of our presentation. But before I begin, just, I just wanted to point out one simple, but I think salient fact for this commission to understand. I mean, we're here, and properly so, but no work is proposed in the wetlands, in the water course, or within your upland review area. The closest activity to any water body, which is Gunpowder Creek, is the removal of existing parking spaces to replace with grass. That's 186 feet away from Gunpowder Creek, or over three times, actually, I think it's 168, 168 feet away from Gunpowder Creek, and that is over three times the distance of your upland review area, which is 50 feet. And the proposed building is located 613 feet away from the creek. So in normal times, perhaps, at least from my perspective, and 46 years of doing these things, it seemed like a relatively simple application as it came to me. It's gotten a little bit of its own life since then, but I'm going to turn it over to Brian to begin the presentation.
Could you state your name and your affiliation, please?
Yes, Brian Kay, licensed landscape architect with SLR. So I'd like to pick up where Dennis left off. A two-story building above an underground parking area, which will support 70 spaces with a green roof on top of that. The green roof may not be the typical green roof, you know, the thin tray system that sits on top of many roofs. The profile of the green roof here, we're talking, is a 12 to 38-inch section of organic material, which is going to grow primarily lawn and plants, so at least when we talk about that, it's a pretty substantial green roof. I'd like to kick it off and start with the area that's closest to the wetland. So 186 feet away, we're taking away 55 surface parking spaces. It's, it's a removal of about 9,300 square feet of untreated impervious surface directly next to the well end. That parking is getting relocated, like we said, in the underground parking garage, where our new impervious surface is, about 11,000 square feet, are... Yeah. Yep. So, like I said, primarily, the new improved, new proposed surface area is going to be all clean water from the roof. That water is going to get filtered down here into a basin out front of the building, which then has an overflow structure, which takes water to our larger basin, and the same with the green roof. The green roof has underdrains under, under the surface of the lawn, so there's room to infiltrate there and eventually overflow into the basin. I'd like to also point out that the building itself will be, is anticipated to be a LEED Platinum Building. For those that don't know LEED, it's basically the most widely used green building rating system. There's, it creates a framework for basically sustainable built buildings and awards points for even site development aspects such as stormwater management, use of native plants, and sediment erosion controls. Going for the Platinum Rating, which is the highest rating, shows, showcases our, our level of care and approach to this construction project. I'd like to also highlight here the impervious surface diagram to show what we're taking away and what we're proposing. So what's shown in green is what we're taking away, a walkway that makes its way to the intersection of North Elm and Christian Street, and the green showing parking being removed. As you can see, we have a couple new walkways. We have the driveway entrance to the parking garage off Christian Street, and the roof area and patio area out back. I'd also like to highlight the watershed maps, how we've tried to match the existing flow patterns as greatly as possible. Highlighted here is the existing. So all the water, as, as it exists in this lawn area where the football field is and where our proposed building is, all flows over land, goes through the parking lot, and comes to the creek. There's a small watershed along Christian Street, which currently grades this way now and makes its way into, into the road. Shown here is how our proposed condition looks, matching it as closely as possible. You can see everything on the north side of our building and along the football field still drains to point P, B here. The rest of the site still goes over the land, goes over the grass, and goes to Gunpowder Creek, as it does now. Eventually, all this water goes to Gunpowder Creek, but there's a slight divide in the site as it exists. What's highlighted here is our two stormwater basins, and probably turn it over to Tom
Good evening. For the record, Tom Daley with SLR Consulting. I'm a professional engineer, and we worked with Brian Kay in our office. We worked closely with the landscape architects to develop a plan that we, we are proud to bring forward to this commission. My focus this evening is to talk to you about stormwater management and then erosion control, because those are both very important elements. So the site is situated at the corner of, intersection of North Elm and Christian. It's, I'm sure this commission knows this property well. It's really high at this end of the project, and then it slopes down towards the thing. And it's a relatively constant, gentle slope that comes all the way down through here. Gunpowder Creek, as Brian has indicated, is located here, off to the left, and really, from a storm drainage standpoint, what happens is there's a drainage system that comes off of North Elm, including Christian, a lot, picks up a lot of the town drainage system, pipes down through the roadway here, and there's also a culvert here, as you can see just off plan, there's a pond, and feeding that pond is a fairly large watershed. So this is kind of a low valley, and that's why this drainage system heads through here. So oft, at, at Christian, at the low point, there's a 30-inch RCP pipe that comes through the project and the property, and then ultimately outlets just on the other side of the athletic fields, and that's what we're calling is Gunpowder Creek.
Use your mic.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Appreciate that. So when we, when we first, so that gives you the context of the hydraulic, what's going on from a stormwater standpoint, and as we're located in the high point of the watershed, the first thing we do is we look at existing conditions, and we do that as engineers, is we look at published data. So we pull down is rainfall data, soil data, watershed areas, and a ground cover, and we take, those are all standard parameters that are published through the state and through the federal government. We plug that into a hydraulic model, and that tells us how much water is coming off of this area under existing conditions. As Brian indicated, that's a representation of the watershed of the project area that we did in our analysis. So under existing conditions, all this area comes down to Gunpowder Creek, except as Brian indicated, there's a slight subdivide. So in the peach area that you see here, that sheet flows into, or that drains towards the public roadway, the remaining blue area just comes down the slope through there. So as we go, so now we understand the existing conditions. We've done a lot of detail analysis, we looked at the survey, we understand what, what is happening. The next step we do is we work, we start into the proposed conditions. But even before we start doing hydraulic modeling, is we work out as a design team to see what, that toolbox of best management practices we can incorporate. Sometimes we have the pleasure of working with a client that is pushing the envelope for us. You know, when a client comes to us and said, "Hey, I want to do LEED Platinum," and I'm, to be honest, I've done a lot of LEED buildings in my time, I've never done a LEED Platinum building. This is probably the first I've ever worked on. If you go through the LEED checklist, you get points for high-quality green infrastructure, best management practices. So we already had a toolbox that we were going to bring into the design and do, and go for. So working with Brian Kay, we said, "Oh, we have this whole toolbox of best management practices, what can we incorporate into this plan?" And really, we started with, with a couple things. One, we said, we worked with Choate, we're, as Brian indicated, we're limiting 59 surface parking. As you know, as a commission, surface parking generates a lot of runoff. This is, as Dennis indicated, is the closest parking that's located to the pipe in Gunpowder Brook. So eliminating 59 parking spaces was a great start for us. That really put us in a great position. Then when we got up to the site, we, the architect actually presented to us, is we're doing this green roof. And as Brian indicated, most of the green roofs we've done on projects, and we've done a bunch on other private schools, they tend to be a little small tray system. They're about that deep, they come in a tray, and you just kind of put them on the roof. They do a great job. This is much more different. This is essentially a full soil profile, and we believe gets greater benefits. It's more vegetated uptake, it gets more storage of stormwater in that soil profile. If you think about a tray, there's not much soil in there. But, so we incorporated that. So once again, we checked another box. That's a great best management practice that we did that. Frankly, the garage in itself is a best management practice. If you had, as commission, said, "Well, I have two choices. I got a parking garage where I can make that footprint of parking much smaller and reduce the amount of purvis, or I can have a surface parking lot where you have drive aisles and everything." So a parking garage in itself is a best management practice, because it compresses the footprint of that parking demand. The fact that we're capping that with a green roof essentially doesn't exist in terms of, of some hydraulic modeling. But then we took a look at, so in the front of the building, we have a bioswale, so we are looking to, along the front of the building, we have a small depression, and that will allow roof leader and the water from there to infiltrate and get into the ground and get polished. So ultimately, we have a bioswale here that has a high level of overflow, and it comes to a stormwater basin that's located here in the left-hand corner. The stormwater basin is designed for both water quality and quantity. It's a vegetated basin. We put enhanced plantings in that basin to provide more vegetated uptake, and the basin is designed also to mitigate for the increase in runoff. So when we did our now, so we were able to put all these best management practices into the project, we did the post-approval or post-construction or the proposed hydraulic analysis, using the same input data that's through published resources, state, federal, and that. We put in the model, and we did analysis, and our analysis showed that both, in both of these watersheds, we are showing no increase in peak runoff rate for the two through the 100-year storm event. And I will say, we are using the new NOAA data, so a couple years ago, I think there was an indication that rainfall data was increasing, so we are using the more modern rainfall data, which is representing probably what you're seeing on a daily basis where some of these storm events are louder, are larger. But as you, as Brian indicated, we also made sure that we're balancing watersheds. While all this water is getting to the same area, you can see under existing conditions and proposed conditions, the pink and the blue are very respectful of each other. We're not dragging a huge amount of area to a different watershed. So we did an analysis here at B, because we wanted to make sure we're not overloading the town drainage system, and at the same point, we did an analysis, A, B, and, and we did an analysis of each, each one of those. So as I said, we, we really, and, and we're achieving that in, in a soft way and a hard way. So we're looking at quantity and quality, and as I indicated to you, all these green infrastructure practices, these LEED-encouraged elements, those are really going to promoting infiltration on this, on, of the, of the water. The basin itself is designed in a way that is going to promote infiltration. It's a vegetated basin. It does have an underdrain in the bottom, because we just want to get that last bit of water, so we don't have standing water for a long period of time, but we will do, it will get infiltration and along with the bioswale. We also expect there to be a limited amount of vegetated uptake in, in the infiltration or storage of water in that green roof profile there. We do have a high level of overflow there, it goes for the bigger storms, but ultimately, that's a, that's a reservoir of basically soil that's going to take up, take up water. In addition to that, we are required, before this commission, and as, for LEED too, it's a requirement, we had to put together a stormwater erosion control plan. We understand the context of this site. This site is, so luckily, we have a site that we're not receiving, I find the biggest challenges on site erosion control is when you're designing at the bottom of the hill and you have five acres of water running through a construction site. Those, historically, those are the projects that I've always found to be challenging. Luckily, we are, we are building this building at the high point of the site, so frankly, the rain we have to, the water we're going to deal with on construction is only the water that falls out of the sky. So that allows us to do, you know, really manage the site well. But in addition to that, we understand, but because, just because of that, we're in a good position. We don't have to divert, you know, all this water around a construction site. But even with that, we do understand Gunpowder Creek is an important resource, we have to protect it. So if you look at our erosion control, we put, once again, have never relied on one level of effort, one level of protection. There's multiple sections, levels of erosion control on this particular plan. First of all, we are proposing sediment traps, and these are basically depressions we're going to go, build during construction. It allows that water, the construction water, to get into those depressions and just settle and, and stay on site. So the goal we really like to do is keep the water on site. I mean, that works the best. And ultimately, those basins will have an overflow that goes to a diversion swale with, with check dams. So once again, slowing that water down as it moves through the construction site, and our sediment traps are actually set in series, so it'll go from one sediment trap through a diversion berm and into another. These things really work well in series, because they get, continue to get that. At the edge of that, we're actually providing, beyond the diversion berm, we're actually providing both hay bales providing both hay bales and silt fence. So you have a double row of protection there at the end of construction. And in addition to that, down at the bottom of the hill, we're putting a final row. We expect water would never, you know, runoff from construction would never get this far across. The grass itself will provide an excellent buffer to there. But we thought it's important, we are putting basically a straw wattle. Straw wattle is essentially a sock with hay in it. And it's very good because it works with the topography very well. So as I said, we have sediment traps, then we have diversion berms, we have a hay bale and a silt fence at the perimeter, and then down below, we have a straw wattle. Frankly, we believe that to be a robust erosion control plan. And actually, I believe one of the lead credits is, not only do you have to have a robust erosion control plan, but you have to prove that it's worked throughout construction. You just can't do it and forget it. It's a requirement. It's actually, I think, a mandatory requirement to get that. So we tried to put in a plan that's easily maintained, both on the stormwater management. These are not exotic systems. They are fairly simple and everything. Frankly, we think there might be an educational opportunity for the students to kind of see how stormwater works, especially with the green roof and the bioswale in the front. That will be front and center. Frankly, from an admission standpoint, people coming here are going to see pretty quickly that stormwater management was an important element of this design. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Megan Raymond to talk to you about wetlands. Thank you.
Do I just hold it? Good evening. For the record, my name is Megan Raymond. I'm a professional wetland scientist, registered soil scientist, certified floodplain manager, and I work with SLR, where I'm a principal scientist in wetlands and waterways lead. I'm pleased to be before you this evening to discuss the Choate admission building project. I did submit a letter, I believe, last week that was in our packet. And I'd like to just describe to you my observations about the site and begin with, as Tom did, kind of an analysis or just a review of the existing conditions here. Obviously, you're here before the Wetland Commission. Due to the size of the proposed project, impervious area, greater than 10,000 square feet, 11,000 square feet and change are proposed. The distance to regulated resources is much larger than the typical projects that you all see. Our closest point is 186 feet to Gunpowder Creek, a colloquial known drainage corridor that runs to the Choate campus. Gunpowder Creek itself is a subwatershed within Wharton Brook. It occupies about 234 acres of land in the larger Wharton Brook watershed, which is a little over 3,000 acres. So Wharton Brook is about 7% of the... Gunpowder Creek, rather, is about 7% of the Wharton Brook watershed. Gunpowder Creek originates sort of in a residential area, probably a third of a mile north of the proposed project area. It flows south in the rear of some homes. It's then impounded on the Choate campus in two surface water ponds. And then the outlet of that, of those ponds, is piped underneath the ground and terminates on the Choate campus, just in the athletic complex. And that is our closest point of wetland activity. That is the 186-foot distance, which I'm going to kind of pivot here and show you. I don't know, it's a little awkward. But we're talking about this point here. This is, the term is a 30-inch pipe, a 36-inch RCP outfall, and that is the origination of Gunpowder Creek as it exists within our project vicinity. The project area is about, in total, about six acres of land on this larger 96-acre site, so it's a relatively small percentage of the overall work. And again, looking at the proposed impervious, that also is quite small, 11,000 square feet of impervious. That's 0.1% of impervious cover in the Gunpowder Creek watershed, not even the larger Wharton Brook watershed. So we're looking at very small numbers. It's my professional opinion that, given the nature of the proposed work area, we're in an existing campus area that's comprised of lawn, asphalt walkway, two frontage roads, the nature of that project area, the extent of the proposed activity, a relatively small building, a consolidated footprint, utilizing every measurable or every tool possible to minimize the work area and maximize resilience and sustainability with subsurface parking, energy usage, stormwater management, running through all the attributes of a building design, as well as the distance to regulated resources, that the proposed project will not have any impact or effect on the physical characteristics of Gunpowder Creek, nor will it affect or result in a diminution of that water course function. And as my colleagues have also described, when we look at, as a wetland scientist, I'm called in a lot, or many often routinely asked of me to analyze impacts. And so when we begin looking at an impact analysis, we start with, are there any direct wetland impacts, water course impacts? The answer to this, in this particular case, is no. We're not working within a wetland or water course. So then we look at potential for indirect impacts. And those indirect impacts, which is what we could consider in this particular project, we then dissect those potential indirect impacts into two categories: short-term impacts, impacts to areas that may result from construction, and then long-term impacts relative to effects of hydrology or water quality, those types of avenues. And because we have a site plan that has been thoroughly considered from both a landscape architect and civil engineering design to address both short-term impacts related to sedimentation and erosion control and long-term impacts with a robust stormwater management, we are not anticipating any indirect impacts to this water course. I think that I just... And this is, I have a relatively brief presentation this evening, talking about these points, and I'm sure we'll have some discourse from the commission as well as the public. But I think I'd like to also just leave you with the consideration of the subsurface parking, the removal of those surface parking spaces in that close position, that close nexus to the Gunpowder Creek outlet cannot be overlooked as a strong improvement to existing site conditions. Choate has the ability, they could have proposed a surface parking area around this building, and we'd be looking at a much different set of analysis or attributes to analyze. The fact that we're consolidating this building footprint, removing those parking spaces in a proximal position, and allowing for underground storage and greening up areas in close proximity to the water course, that's a great improvement and will benefit the overall project area as well as the Choate campus, and I think it would benefit the citizens in town. So I'm pleased to answer any questions as we move on through the evening. I'm going to turn it back to attorney, the attorney, and maybe Brian might have one more thing to say.
Mr. Chairman, we're just going to... I think one of the things is, I'm listening to the presentation. I'm pleased with it, but I wanted to make sure that this commission has a little more information about this green roof. Because to me, again, underground parking area was kind of new. I've been in them, but I've never presented one. And I also thought, you know, it's important to know, we've identified where it's located, that the building will sit on top of this parking lot, parking garage, but not all of it. So there's an area that would otherwise have a, I guess, some kind of metal or roof, concrete roof. Instead, this concept of a green roof came up, and SLR can explain why it provides an additional benefit. You'll see green where you otherwise would have seen normally a roof on the garage.
So we already covered it. It's much more substantial than a typical green roof you might have seen or known about, but because of its uniqueness, I just want to highlight it here.
Oh, could I have your name again?
Yes. Brian Kay, licensed landscape architect with SLR.
We've provided this in their package, have we not?
Yes, correct. So you guys have this in your package, but just to highlight for everybody else here, we're talking about 12 inches of topsoil with primarily lawn on top of that. And the next, up to 22 inches, is just on-site material. Below that, we have a thin sand layer, which is going to house our flat drain. The flat drain is specifically a 1-inch-tall by 12-inch-wide drainage system. So as water infiltrates this profile, it'll get to those drains in a slow manner. Like, as it rains, it will trickle down, eventually get to those pipes, and then eventually to our storm basin. Below that is exactly as it's described. It's the roof slab, it's the top of the garage. But I just wanted to highlight and showcase exactly what is made up of that green roof.
That's our presentation, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We're certainly prepared to answer any questions that you might have, or any issues that may arise during discussions with the public.
Okay, thank you. Does the commission have any questions?
I have one. So Gunpowder Creek actually does originate to the north. I take it that the 36-inch culvert, basically, that takes it underground from the other side of Christian Street, does not go in a straight line? It's not noted on any of your plans where that underground...
Yes, for the record, Tom Daly. It's not a perfect straight line, but it's pretty straight. So if you look at the plan, that you see, the survey taps out, but ultimately, that does head right towards Christian. So it is generally a straight line. As the crow flies, it might have a couple kinks here and there. But as we sit here today, there's the low point in Christian, and then it just kind of shoots straight across.
All right, so it's underneath the existing parking lot right now? And then it kinks up to the pond, just to the west of...
Mic's not on.
Again?
There you go.
Okay. So I looked at mapping, and what happened is, there's really a confluence of drainage at Christian. We have town drainage coming in this direction. We have town drainage that comes down North Elm, picks up all this intersection, comes down here, that connects there. And as Megan indicated, you can just see the pond off here. So then you have a third connection. So it's really, because this is just a natural low point, all the water... So a lot of the water is coming from town roadway systems, and then it all comes here. But because it's a low point, it has to go somewhere, and it heads south.
Okay, and it heads south into Gunpowder Creek?
Correct.
It does not connect into the town storm drains at all?
Well, the town storm drainage connects to the 30-inch pipe at Christian.
Okay.
They all come together, and then they shoot out.
Okay.
So it's really receiving water from town drainage, upgraded watershed, the ponds, and then obviously, we just have natural sheet flow coming off campus. So I looked at it. It's a pretty extensive system that comes all the way up here. As I indicated, this is high, this is low, everything wants to come. And as Megan indicated, it's a fairly decent watershed coming through this pond system down through here. That answer?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Do you have questions, Graham?
Sorry, I do have one question. You did speak a lot about the various tiers and layers of your drainage system, but I keep reading ultimately discharging to Gunpowder Creek. So is it ultimately discharging into the creek, or, you know, can we...
We are actually connecting to a pipe. Everything in this area goes ultimately to Gunpowder Creek. Every drop of water. So we are not discharging. We are connecting... Maybe it's better to show you. If you see, can you see? I know you're the farthest person away, but there's a dark line that comes down through here, right through the field. That's our connection. That's to the 30-inch pipe. The actual outlet of the pipe is another several hundred feet away. So we do not pipe directly to Gunpowder Brook. It goes to the 30-inch pipe, which then ultimately goes to Gunpowder, which ultimately goes to Wharton Brook. Yeah, everything kind of rolls downhill at that point. But we don't have a... We are not hard piping anything to the Brook. Correct. We're utilizing the infrastructure that exists down below.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mike, do you have any questions?
I was just wondering, so you're considering the building impervious, right? You're considering the garage, I guess. I wanted to know, like, as a proportion, is there runoff from the green roof compared to just like a standard roof?
Absolutely, yes. So everything has runoff, right? So grass, woods. So when you look at published data based upon the soil type, everything has a threshold. So giving... These are round numbers, but pavement, typically pavement or roof gets about 98% runoff, right? Grass is more in the range of 30%. So that green roof, which is here, is contributing, it is included in our calculations. So there is always runoff. Even your own lawn, right? Big enough storm, you do get runoff. You probably won't get a lot of runoff there on those small frequent storms, you know, a small storm event, but we did model that to have some runoff, yes. The roof itself, yes, we did model that as a full, basically, impervious surface. Correct.
So really, with regards to a regular lawn versus the green roof, do they kind of act the same way? Is it more?
It's very similar. So you think about underlying... So in this particular green roof, when we do the other tray systems, we do model those slightly different because there's no storage capacity below those. Because these do have, this does have this 24 inches of storage capacity, you do that. And most soil data is, they're only looking at the soil profile of that first 24 inches. So yes, it will have runoff, but we did model it closer to lawn than it would be if it was a paved surface.
Okay, I've got a couple questions. The soil types, were they usable for drainage per situation?
Brian Kay. So what we did in our calculations that were part of this submission is, we did not account for any infiltration, understanding that there would be. We did worst-case scenario estimations on how we're going to treat and manage stormwater. Therefore, we didn't count for infiltration. But we know the reality, there will be infiltration. There will be infiltration in our basins. There will be the infiltration that happens in all of those water quality swales that we talk about and the green roof itself. So in terms of the calculations, we don't take, didn't take infiltration into consideration, just planning, worst case.
But I would say is, what we tried to do is replicate existing conditions. So every soil has some level of infiltration. I'm a firm believer, even soils with poor porosity can still provide some water quality in terms of infiltration. What you're trying to do is mimic what's existing out there today. So what we did was, we put elements into the plan that promote infiltration. The green roof promotes vegetated uptake and soil capacity, that bioswale. So we believe, we... There is a definite opportunity for infiltration, and that's why we include in the plans. We did include in the plans high-level overflows because we don't want water standing there for a long period of time, and the grass doesn't look good and such. So what Brian is saying, from a conservative standpoint, we didn't put it into the calculations. But the reality is, the plan is specifically drawn up to promote infiltration. The bioswale in the front, it's designed exactly for that. The basin is going to have a flat bottom with an underdrain, but with good vegetation in it. So, and the green roof, while it's less because that profile is more, there is an opportunity to store water and have vegetated uptake. So I believe, yes, the area is mapped as youthorthin, which is, which just means it was previously developed. Doesn't mean it doesn't have a good, still have a good opportunity to infiltration. I don't think, I know Wallingford has soils, some parts of town probably have absolutely beautiful sand, and you can do... We did not expect that to occur here. But we still are trying to get every ounce of infiltration we can get out of the project by designing it this way.
You talk about the elimination of the parking area to the blow side there. I know when there's events there, that that whole area is packed with cars. You're going to take that away, and what are you going to do? Put grass back in there? So they'll be parking on the grass with the leaky antifreeze and oils or whatever. Instead of having it on a paved surface, it's going to be... You're eliminating something that's been there for years, and people are used to going there, and they're going to park there. there whether there's a lawn or there's a parking area. How are you going to address the influences that are going to be dropped on the lawn there?
They're going to be directed to the new underground parking garage. That is the substitute so that that area will not allow, the choat will not allow parking on the grass, on the new grass. Again, more spaces are being created in the underground parking garage that are being taken away. And the number of spaces, you wouldn't have the admissions process going on during these events like games, sports games. So the underground parking garage would be open to the public to use that during that, those sorts of activities. It is, it is an alternative, is the alternative. It's not to use, which is a very good point, it's not to use that grass area for parking.
So there's going to be controls, limited parking down there?
We have the former chief of police of Wallingford controlling that, yes.
In addition to that, we are also putting trees in there. It's just not lawn, there's trees, which are also going to limit the ability to park there. But I think we're committing on the record right now that that will not, parking will be managed. Frankly, we'd like to get people off the thing and park in the parking garage.
Okay. The other question I have is on the piping size around the perimeter of the new building for footing drains in the parking garage.
Yes.
Why the size? What's the reasoning for the size of a, I've never seen a footing drain that was 15 inches in diameter, unless you have a high water table.
No, and I think, so the footing drain is not 15-inch, it's the pipe we're tying into is 15 and 12-inch. And that's from an engineering practice, there's a minimum standard. The expectation on the footing drain on this building would be no more than a typical foundation at 6-inch.
Worst-case scenario, do you have the numbers that, how much CFM water is going to be coming into, down across into the Brook? You know, have you regulated that? I know you talked about swales that are going to slow it down, but what's going to be the total impact? How much water are you going to be putting in there? Because I'm sure when you open up that upper area there, there's going to be some ground, significant groundwater coming off of Curtis Street and?
We don't have that number and it's very hard to calculate groundwater. What I would say is that it'll be more of a long-term flow. Groundwater tends to be, you know, slow trickle or on that as opposed to this, you know, fire hose of drainage. And I think, yes, probably, I agree with you, if it was a 15-inch footing drain, it's a little bit of a head scratcher, but it's not. It's a 6 or inch. But we think that ultimately the groundwater is already getting to Gunpowder Brook, it's moving through the soil. We just, we're going to be picking that up and connecting there. But we expect the time of concentration and frankly, we'd like to get the groundwater back to Gunpowder because that's good clean water, we want to get it into the system. But I don't have a calculation, it's virtually impossible to calculate groundwater flow in a footing drain, but it's been my experience is that is not a large amount compared to the storm events we do in the storm drainage pipes, which are much more significant.
Something that we neglected to really focus on in the past that we are now more so is the downstream effect with the amount of storm water runoff you're going to have coming off of this site now. How much impact is that going to have on the Brook as far as the height of the Brook and the impact?
You're talking Wharton Brook, are you, or Gunpowder Creek?
Talking Gunpowder, the whole route coming off of Choat.
So we did a hydraulic analysis and for, we analyzed for all, for storms, 2, 10, 25, 50, and 100. And for all storm events, we are showing actually a slight decrease in peak runoff to Gunpowder Brook. And that's being achieved through the stormwater detention basin and the other water. So we are mitigating for those through our design, so we are not increasing the peak runoff rate to that Brook. So our analysis, and I think Megan, you indicated, we're only about seven, a pretty small portion of the overall watershed, so. But even if we're small, we still had to mitigate for it. So we provided drainage calculations and for each one of those storm events, we're showing a net decrease.
You are showing a net increase?
Decrease.
Oh, decrease.
Small, but a small decrease for all storm events. And even, we also did a separate analysis to Christian, we're showing a slight decrease to Christian also. And that's through mitigation.
And why is it that last summer or certain times of the year you drive down by there, that low spot where the stormwater pipe runs across the road, that parking lot will be underwater or have a significant amount of water in it? Is it because it can't get back, get it into Gunpowder Creek or what's causing that to happen?
I can't say, it could be a variety of things. You know, catch basins could not have enough inlet capacity. We have not heard from Choat that they've experienced any flooding associated with the capacity of that pipe. It may have to do with just it's a low point and you know those storms that we get that anytime we have a low point and you get those heavy summer storms, the water just can't get into the catch basins quick enough.
Well, it's year after year, when they have their soccer event over there, it's saturated, I mean, the grounds are saturated. Sometimes they've got to shift fields because it's, there's standing water on the fields. Now, I'm just, is that because of soil types, the water's not percolating?
I think it's a combination of both, but it's also the fact that the entire neighborhood is sending all their water down to this area. But yeah, I don't think the expectation, yeah, but I think that's pretty common, we see on our athletic fields that there is time where they are saturated. It probably does have to do with the underlying soils. We don't, yeah, so it's probably has a combination of both. It's a lot of water coming from off-site sources into here, but the underlying soils probably during certain times of year get saturated.
Now, the cost, the cost and expense of the green roof, is that going to help you dissipate the water that's going to, would actually, the stormwater, the rainwater that's going to be coming down through there? You're going to slow it down through percolation, but you're still going to have a significant amount of water where that footprint is for the roof?
We don't think so. I mean, we, well, we plugged in the numbers and we don't think it's significant. I mean, it's a fairly small footprint for the overall watershed. And once again, that all that green roof is draining to the detention basin, so that's not free flow into Gunpowder, it's all going into detention basin. And ultimately, the outlet control structure in that detention basin meters all the flow. So even, so the green roof was included in the model up to the 100-year storm.
So you're using it as part of your numbers for the 100-year?
Well, it's, we, when we do the analysis, we look at cover. So we're looking at, we have roof, we have pavement, we have green roof, we have other areas, and that gets all put into the model. So yes, the green roof was modeled as a, as a green feature into the model and, but we still, it all gets routed to the detention basin and it metered through that.
Well, I'm confused here because you're saying you're not using anything on the property for your calculations for the water, but now you're telling me that the green roof is part of your modeling or part of your calculations. Are you using it or are you not using it to calculate what's going to be runoff up there?
Well, it's in the watershed, it has to be calculated. I mean, everything I showed you on the blue map, everything in that blue area and the pink area was included in our calculations. So we have to, we have, we did not take it out of our calculations. The green roof is in the model and generating runoff, I think the other chair, commissioner, so it is in the model. We're not excluding the green roof from our model, it was included. And all the pavement area, but we did take, included in the model is the area where we're reducing the pavement, so that was included in the model. But all the new walkways, all the new building, everything, that was all included in the model under proposed conditions to tell us what is coming off of this site.
And how much was the green roof calculated in as far as percentage?
Of the total watershed? Well, as you can see from the blue area, the watershed is actually fairly large. Brian, does it say? I'll get you, but I would say the green roof, based upon this watershed, if I had to guess, it is 5% or less of the overall watershed.
So if we eliminated that, you'd have to add 5% on the total?
No. If I, if, say, say it was, say you got rid of the green roof and we just put favors down, I would have to plug into the model a different cover. I would put in a different, so whatever that surface is, it gets plugged in differently.
Other applications, we always ask that the applicant retains the water on their property, slows it down from releasing into the Brook or the river or whatever it is. In this case, what have you done to slow down the water for this development, for this project, so it's not going to add significant amount of water into the gun smoke Brook or Gunpowder Brook? What have you done?
So, so the first thing we did was there, in front of the building, adjacent to North Elm, is a bioswale. So that's a linear structure along there that allows the roof leaders to go into there. And that area is long and linear, it allowed to be filled up and infiltrate water. So that's step one to slow down the water from the roof at the beginning. Ultimately, we believe strongly that the green roof also slows down the water. I mean, if you think about, when a drop of rain hits a piece of pavement, it's immediately into the system. This water actually has to go through and travel through almost 20, 24 inches of soil. Even if it gets to, it would get to an underdrain. That takes a long time, so we slow down that. In addition to that, then all that water goes to a detention basin. The basin is designed in a way that it allows that water to fill up and slowly, very slowly, drain out through a small underdrain and through infiltration. So nothing on this, there's not one element on this plan where we're taking any of the new development area and just piping it out. Every one, and what happens is this green roof works with the bios, so if you think about it, it keeps working in series, so it slows it down every time, every step. So we think we have met your standard where we provided these three best management practices to slow down the water, reduce the amount of water getting to Gunpowder Brook and to achieve those goals you just mentioned.
So these three systems you put in, there's, because of the soil types, you're not taking into consideration any percolation into the soil, right? Or are you going to design these so there's going to be some type of holding back some of the stormwater?
We are holding back stormwater, but we took the conservative approach when we did the calculations, we looked at worst case, that we assumed no infiltration. That is a standard practice that we do. We think worst case, what I'm telling you now is, they are all designed to hold back water and promote infiltration.
Is that standard practice?
It's standard practice to assume worst case. That's, I guess we're engineers, we do that. I mean, even when you do the analysis, it assumes, the way the federal government does it, you assume the water is, all the soil is under fully saturated condition. That's a standard that the federal government has put into their calculations. But in terms of the actual design before this commission, there's multiple elements that are designed to slow down the water, promote infiltration, and keep it on site through the lawn area, through the biodepression, and through the detention basin. And then also reduction of the most, probably the water that was getting to Gunpowder Brook, the quickest was those 59 parking spaces that are now being taken out of it. That was probably hitting with no, there's no stormwater management there. That is just 59 spaces that just drain and go off. So anytime we work on a new project, there's an opportunity to bring other areas of the site into compliance with what the standards that this commission is typically seeing. So as Megan indicated, those closest, that closest amount of impervious cover and converting that to lawn and trees will just right out of the gate promote more infiltration and slow things down.
Chairman, can I make some comments at this time?
Yeah.
Would that be good?
Yeah, we've heard enough, you can do your thing.
Okay. I have a lot of questions and comments. Before I start, maybe, I just want to say that over, the application came in in November and then over the, we've had several months here, the applicant has been very cooperative, working with staff over these months. And in the process, the original plan has morphed, it's improved, it keeps on improving. We had a first site plan came in, was, I guess it was dated October 28th, second site plan that came in December 28th, third site plan that came in was January 27th. And each time, the applicant, applicant's team has worked with town staff tweaking it, making it better in response to maybe my comments or someone else's comments, but also in response to their internal comments, like on Friday, just the latest plan I noticed now they're, they haven't talked about it tonight. I don't think you mentioned they added flock clocks. So maybe they could talk about that, but in a bit, let me just finish. So they keep on tweaking it, making it a better and better plan. And there's a lot of back and forth, they respond, and you've got all these documents, there's, they submit responses to my comments or other staff comments. They submit, we talk about their various diagram of supplemental documents that have been submitted, the stormwater management maintenance plan, again, it gets tweaked back and forth with some more comments on what was handed in on Friday. The wetland report came in, dated Friday, came in Friday afternoon. I did have a chance to talk to their wetland scientist, I believe it was yesterday. And so it, they've, the project is coming along, it is different with this green roof. Some questions come up, some of them have been answered. I did want to circle back, or maybe, maybe I should focus right now on what the commission needs to focus in on. Ultimately, they're asking to obtain wetland permitting for certain regulated activities. So it's a very interesting project, but really, at the end of the day, the commission has to focus on the regulated activities that they are asking for. So I work with them as to defining what the regulated activities are, and essentially there's two kinds. One is we've seen over and over again, that's our surface area provision. Creation of surface area, we see it on so many developments now. As more and more of the open land is gone, there's a lot of redevelopment and so on, so we see a lot of creation of surface area over the threshold in our regulations, which in this case, in most cases, if you have 20,000 square feet already developed, the surface area on your property, it'd be, if you add another 10,000 square feet, that would trip the need for a wetland permit, wetland permitting. In this case, with the auditorium that we, that Choat came in with and was approved, oh gosh, four years ago maybe, I'm guessing right, we explained to Choat that from now on, you're going to trip that surface area provision, anything you do, because it is a cumulative provision. It's, and the wording is right there in the, the language is right there in the regulated activity as it's defined in our regulations. It's cumulative. So if they keep on doing this over here, doing this over here, doing this over here, all this improvement, such as the auditorium, from now, from this moment forward, everything will trip that surface area provision. So even if it was less than 10,000 square feet, but in this case, it's, it is over, happens to be over 10,000 square feet. What the commission traditionally looks for under that regulation, we look for two things, replication of the natural hydrograph, that's the water, the pink and blue watershed map they've been showing you to show that they're not fiddling with the watershed. It's pretty much, they're not altering where the water goes, just a little bit, but it's pretty much the same. So they've met that mark. The other thing we look for is infiltration of the roof water. We focus mostly on roof water because it's clean water. So that water, the DEP and this commission understands can go into the ground. It doesn't have to be treated before it goes anywhere, it can go right into the ground. So we look for infiltration. In this case, they are not infiltrating that roof water directly into the ground. A lot of development we see now can't do that, the soils do not accommodate, they don't have great infiltration rates. I don't know particularly what the infiltration rate is on these fill soils on this site, but they've elected to take the roof water and bring it to a bioswale in the front and then bring it down and then discharge it into this drainage basin. Tonight they say some, there is some infiltration in that drainage basin. So that's, that's one thing. There is, under the surface area provision, I think we need to talk a little bit more on how they calculated, because there's, I've been getting a lot of phone calls about this in my office, about how that green roof was calculated when they're looking at their water budget and their water handling on the site. So it is unique, it's definitely unique to Wallingford and I've been, I've never encountered it, this particular kind of green roof. It's obviously very interesting and obviously a good green, pro-environment kind of feature. It's obviously very interesting, and obviously a good green, pro-environment kind of feature. So it kind of doesn't fit into the existing typical modeling that we use, because we don't get it. You've never seen it before. So it is, some people would think that it might, should be counted as impervious surface, because that's a concrete garage, so it's impervious. But then, well, no, but the top 20, 14 to 22 soil media later on the top, that's more like a lawn. But then you say, okay, but if it rains in your lawn at home, the water goes down. It doesn't go off in, in pipes in a heavy rain to the drainage basin. So it's, it's kind of unfair to put it in one category or the other, because it's kind of a unique animal. That's my feeling about it. But they didn't count it as impervious, just so you know. That, and correct me if I'm wrong, that concrete parking garage underneath was not counted as, as in their impervious surface calculations. Am I wrong on that? Am I correct on that?
So in terms of our stormwater calculations, it was classified as lawn? That's, that's how we accounted for it, in the, in the sizing of the basins and things like that?
And what Brian just answered, that calculation, that modeling, is what our town engineer looks at to comply, in order to make sure that they comply with the planning and zoning regulation for peak rate. We don't, the Wetland Commission doesn't regulate peak rate. Planning and zoning commission, it's inside the zoning regulations, that thou shalt not increase the rate of the water into discharging off the site or into a wetland or into a stream. What this commission looks at is infiltration. So that's where it's a different, it's a different way of looking at how the water is traveling. Both are legitimate, but we look more at infiltration down into the ground. So I just wanted to point that out, that if you look at the numbers, it's a little, it doesn't represent that garage underneath, okay? Obviously, I feel personally, I feel the garage is a plus. We don't want to, I mean, most people would agree that the appearance of a surface parking lot is not, a green roof is much preferable to the look of a surface parking lot. So, and it has many green features, pro-environmental features. It's thermally, it doesn't create the heat that an asphalt parking lot creates. It has the benefit of being a carbon sink, it evaporates some of the rainwater. And most of the storms, I think the engineer, that Tom Daley, the engineer, would agree, most of the storms, and I asked them to figure out what percent of the storms, are little storms. That a lot of those storms are never going to get down to the underdrain underneath that green roof. They're going to stay in the soil media, that, that soil media, which is 14 to 22 inches. Am I right on that? And it's going to, what they call evapotranspirate, up into the atmosphere, through the process of photosynthesis, it's going to, it's going to help with, with some of the water budget So I want to, that was, we just focused on one regulated activity, impervious surface, or impervious surface activity. So what maybe I'd like there to make a little clearer is how they've addressed that regulated activity. How have they addressed, it's, it's 2.1, 0.2 in our regulations, how have they addressed that? The other regulated activity, I've broken it down into five or so different parts, but it's essentially discharge of stormwater into, in this case, Gunpowder Creek. In other words, the water that they're proposing to discharge in that creek isn't happening today. Maybe it's getting there slowly, underground, slowly, but it's a discreet discharge. They're taking it from that drainage basin and, and directing it into that larger underground pipe, and then it's going to be daylighted into Gunpowder Creek. There's also the footing drain, water is coming out to Kristen Street, going down into the bigger pipe. So these are two things that aren't happening today, that they're proposing to do, that need permitting. So maybe we should just stop and just talk about, have the applicant talk how they're addressing these two regulated permits, I mean, regulated activities.
So on the, so on the first point about increase, over 10,000 square feet of impervious, we, we agree that the green roof is not 100% pervious or impervious. There's some threshold in between. What we've calculated and what we know of, of lawn areas that are of that depth, during a heavy storm event, the initial kind of top layer, it gets extremely saturated. And then at that point, water just has to run off. It can't, it can't go through anymore. So when you're talking about a soil volume that's upwards of 14 inches plus, that initial top layer is going to become extremely saturated, the top runs off just like lawn would. That's, that's our logic in using that thinking to talk about that level of infiltration in the green roof. And like Tom mentioned, all the storm basins and the other improvements on here are promoting infiltration. I guess the, one way to look at it is, it's, it's two different things. All of those are planned to, are planned to promote infiltration. The issue, the, when it comes to, I lost my train of thought.
You can promote all day long, but if you're not getting any infiltration.
Got it back. So what we've done is, looking at that infiltrate, we don't, we haven't analyzed that soil to see if there would be infiltration. Our thinking is that there will be infiltration, some level of infiltration in those soils. The, the plan is to have them infiltrate as much as possible. If we went about using the assumption of assuming a certain infiltration rate, and say those were not achievable, then our basins would be undersized at that point. That's really what's come up with our logic in sizing those basins, not counting for that infiltration, to determine the size rather than what will actually happen. So just trying to explain, worst-case scenario planning, size-wise for those, understanding infiltration is going to happen in those.
Do you, are you finished, Chairman, with that subject we run?
Well, I'm, what the, what he's telling me is that, I heard before, there's no, there's no infiltration going on, but they hope there's going to be some, but they can't count on it. So what they're hoping for is not what's going to happen. So you, really, you designed this, and it's not, you're not really doing anything.
With all respect, I don't think that's true. I mean, that, if we designed it when nothing happened, we would have just piped it and sent it to the river, or to the brook. As I presented in my, my presentation, we have included significant best management practice that promote infiltration. Looking at some of the Boilering data, the first top layer above the, above the subsoil is a good sandy material. So we've designed the biodepression in the front, that basically the water has to fill up before it can even overflow. It has no choice but to infiltrate before it goes on its way. There's, and even on the detention basin, we have an outlet control structure that the water has to fill all the way up before it overflows. It has no choice but to promote infiltration.
Or overflow.
But it only overflows on the high storms. So the way, you have to do that, because you're not going to get inf, I mean, I can't flood people out. So we have to design, any good management thing promotes infiltration, so it's a vegetated basin, we should get a significant amount of infiltration in the, in the biodepression and there. And as I continue to say, elimination of 59 parking spaces will result in significant infiltration that's not occurring from pavement that occurs today. So I, I believe we have included much of it. Looking at the Boilering data, the first subsoil is a good sandy soil. After that, you do get deeper, you do get into a glacial till, but that first layer does look to be well-suited for localized infiltration. And most of our stormwater practices we're proposing are in that upper layer.
What, to what extent are you, we're talking about the building and the parking garage. I also see on here, there's a soccer field, or what's this big field below it?
That's existing.
What is it?
That's existing athletic field.
So that lays no impact on this as far as storm?
We're not touching that. Well, it's, it's, it's getting natural infiltration, so when the rain hits that area, it, it infiltrates to the extent that it naturally can occur, but we're not touching that. There's no, there's no change in that part of the watershed.
All right, Aaron, I think, well, the commission, any more questions? One more.
So what is the capacity of that biodepression? And you had said before that, you know, you, you didn't want standing water, but then it also doesn't overflow, it doesn't hit the pipe to drain out until it's full? So what happens if it doesn't infiltrate?
There's, there's a small underdrain there that will slowly allow that water to dissipate and infiltrate.
What's the capacity of the biodepression?
It's, it's just below the 10-year storm, if that's a good reference.
I was just looking for like either square?
Length by length by depth.
Hubic footage, or gallons, or some sort of?
Three, three feet deep.
Three feet deep?
Deep.
By?
I would say by, just to 60 feet?
60 feet?
In length?
Long? Okay. Probably about 40 feet wide, 30 feet wide?
Yeah, I would say, looking at this plan, it's about 40 feet wide and 80 feet long.
All right, 80 feet long. Okay. Just map faster than I do.
So I could ask, if the applicant could address the second class of regulated activity, the alteration from the discharge of stormwater and groundwater from footing drain into Gunpowder Creek that is not being discharged into Gunpowder Creek today? That's the regulated activity that you're seeking permitting for?
So in terms of groundwater, we are discharge, all the, all the natural groundwater is going towards Gunpowder Creek. It's the natural topography that's going through there. Yes, we, as with typical construction, probably every structure, you know, in, in Wallingford has a footing drain on it. All the buildings, especially along this area, probably have footing drains. We are putting there, but we're not, all we're doing is picking up and putting it right back to where it goes. So from a groundwater standpoint, we are not diminishing the amount of flow going to Gunpowder Brook. We're not directing it to a different watershed, we're not using it for other purposes, we are not directing it to there. It is being routed through a pipe system, but ultimately, it's the same. In terms of this, the overall stormwater, as I, part of my presentation and Brian's too, we worked very hard, and I think you even said, Aaron, in your comments, in terms of the watershed balance, we are not directing anything out of the watershed. We are not in a situation where we're at a crest and we're taking half away from a watershed that doesn't get it. So all that water that is going to Gunpowder Creek today is going there tomorrow, because I think you can, too little is a negative and too much can be, but ultimately, we believe that, as part of our presentation, we are not redirecting any flow to subwatersheds or different watersheds where that water doesn't go to that.
So what, what's the impact on the creek of new discharge coming out into it?
We are not, well, we're not proposing a new discharge, we're tying into the existing discharge as it currently exists. In review of the overall watershed, it's my professional opinion that hydrologically, it will not have any impact on Gunpowder Brook, because we are mitigating through our stormwater management. And overall, in the context, as with Megan's presentation, it's a very small project in the overall scheme of the, of the overall watershed. So it's my professional opinion, it will have no negative impact on the hydraulic capacity of Gunpowder Brook.
Could you say that again? No negative impact on the hydraulic capacity? Is that what you said?
Yeah, and, and, and the drainage capacity of, of Gunpowder Brook.
Is there a point where water shouldn't be put into Gunpowder Creek anymore?
It, it's naturally occurring, there's no other, no. It is, it is serving its purpose as a drainage way. That's where the water needs to go, and that's where we're sticking it. There's, it, it, it's designed for that, it was built for that, it was built for that. The fact that it was, it's piped through a large portion of it tells you, this is generally functioning as a conduit for stormwater. So I, it's my opinion, we are sending the drainage exactly where it needs to go and where it naturally goes today.
Does, does it flood Gunpowder Creek? Can you talk a little about its flooding conditions?
I think there is an expectation, under severe storm events, it floods, but the campus is situated in a, in a way that it may temporarily flood onto some of the athletic fields, but then it recedes naturally and, and there. It's not, it's, nowhere in this section is mapped as a, in this immediate area is mapped as a floodplain. There is some floodplain down below, but it's a, basically, a undeveloped portion of the campus. It, it functions as a floodplain. As you see many towns, I don't know if Wallingford included, but many towns put their athletic fields in, in floodplains because they can handle it. So there is some flooding that goes down below, but frankly, I think every stream probably experiences some flooding under certain events.
Actually, I think we've got to correct something, said, there is flooding designated.
I said downgrading, but not in this immediate, the floodplain does not come up into this, this area that you're?
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about Gunpowder Creek.
Yeah.
Where you're going to put the water in, right where it daylights.
I, I believe every stream floods under certain events, yes. But, but the campus is, is, well, but if it does, it just simply overflows its banks into the athletic fields when the storm event passed, it recedes and off it goes.
I guess the reason I bring it up is, like you say, a lot of storm, creeks flood, a lot of creeks have a natural floodplain. But it has come up, I've gotten a lot of questions and literature from the public on this, even, and you even put in your initial submission, there was a FEMA map, so you showed this. So, and there is some, some confusion or lack of, because that bridge across the Center Street was recently reconstructed by the state of Connecticut, it has altered probably the maps that are available on the internet and the maps that are available in this building to look at that floodplain. Because they, that map hasn't been redrawn by anybody. The federal government hasn't redrawn it, the town didn't redraw, hasn't redrawn it. After they redid the bridge over Center Street, they, meaning the, the, conduct and the DEP, the state of Connecticut, to pass more water, it needed reconstruction anyway, apparently, you know, it was getting old. But apparently, when they reconstructed it, it can pass a lot more flood flows. So I just wanted to get it out there in the record that there's a bit of confusion now where the, it's probably less floodplain territory than there was before they reconstructed the bridge. But right now, we don't have any hard evidence, one way or the other. A lot of material has come in on this subject, so I just wanted to give you the opportunity to talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, I can, so I would say is, one, we are far astray of that floodplain as mapped. As an engineer and as a floodplain manager, we have no choice but to use that documentation. If others have fallen short, town, state, federal, to not remap that. But that is the best knowledge we have. It appears to be, I can't speak to the bridge, we had no involvement in the bridge. But the reality is, the floodplain is downgrading of us, so we're not imposing on the flood capacity of that. That's a regulated activity, that if we were filling any of the floodplain, we would have to compensate for that. But the floodplain is really planned left, off-plan, and, and we're not, we're not modifying the floodplain at all. That would actually be probably an activity that we'd have to get a permit from the town of Wallingford to do. But in terms of, I, I can't speak to, you, you probably know more than me about the bridge, that's, we were not involved in that. But the mapping as shown on the FEMA map, if you download it, is the legally bound document that we have to work with.
And I just want to, for people that may not know, when Tom was mentioning, you may need to get a flood permit for that. That would be under Planning and Zoning Commission. The flood regulations are housed inside the zoning regulations. So that, this commission doesn't deal with flood permitting.
Okay, Aaron, are you all set?
If I could just check, check my notes real quick. If I could just check my notes real quick. Hey, I'm good. Thank you for giving me the time.
All right, we're going to, everybody in the commission has addressed their concerns, their questions. We're going to open this up now to the general public for comments on wetlands, issues only. The way this works, you come up to the microphone, you give your name and address, and these will be wetland issues, concerns. They'll be taken down by the applicant. The questions won't be answered, it won't be a question and answer period, it'll be just questions you have. The applicant will have time to answer them at the end of the format, so. I don't care where we start. Who wants to be first? Just remember, everything is concerned for wetlands, issues only.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Coyne. I live on Curtis Avenue. I have a quick question. What is the square footage of the parking garage?
Pardon me, I'm having trouble hearing.
My name is Jennifer Coyne. I live on Curtis Avenue. My question is quick. What's the square footage of the parking garage?
Okay, is that your question?
It's my understanding, I thought we were just going to take notes and answer them all at the end?
Well, that's what I wanted to do, but a quick question like this, you can specify what she needs to know by looking at the-
Okay, well, if you can guide us there, so we don't interrupt you.
Yeah, we- All right.
We don't know?
They'll know by the end of this meeting.
It's an architectural element, so we just have to-
All right, next.
My name is Lois Schach, 319 North Elm Street. I listen very closely to all the data that was presented, and it's very impressive. I'm not an engineer. I don't know engineering terms. I would just like to comment that I'm really very worried about anything that happens with our wetlands. And back of my property, I came to these meetings and I listened to engineers talk about, there would be no problems with drainage with the new homes that were built, the Choate new homes up in back of my property. Since they were built and all the engineers guaranteed there would be no water runoff any more than normal. I now have a skating rink in my backyard. I pay taxes on a half an acre. I can use one quarter of an acre, because you would sink up to your thighs if you walked in my backyard. This is new, this year. So, I'm very, very concerned. I don't know about wetlands. I do know that I've been given a lot of information from our wetlands, people saying, "You can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do this, you can't do that, you have to protect." Well, I don't think these kinds of projects are protecting our environment, and that's my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Hi, Jared Liu, Curtis Avenue. Just hoping that the applicants can talk a little bit more about the impervious surfaces. So, as I was looking at the map, I was understanding that the parking spaces below are going away, but the driveway is staying. And if you could confirm that, that'd be great. But I'm curious to the chairman's point as well, because it sounds like these 70 spots are doing a lot of heavy lifting that are going underneath, because my understanding is, the day students park in those spaces, so now you're moving all of the day students underneath into the lower, that underground parking, and then you're taking all of the event parking that would be there, you're taking the event parking where the new building is going as well, which could be, I mean, 100 cars go on that grass area. And so, I'm just, I guess my concern is sort of the larger impervious question of, outside of this box that we're seeing, are there other parking lots that are being constructed just off to the side by the athletic center? Yeah, sort of, what is that impervious plan there? Because, and the map looks great, you know, I see a lot of green, but I'm wondering if there are other impervious surfaces that we're not seeing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Philly Uker, Curtis Avenue. I had a couple of specific questions that just came up to light while I was watching the presentation. They are somewhat specific. The first question I had was regard to the Peach Watershed, Watershed 20, I believe it is. There was a point made that the two smaller watersheds were, it was designed to keep them the same size, but when you look at the plans, Watershed 20 is reduced by about one-third of its area. That's fairly significant. And it was mentioned that that's just in the end zone of the football field, the playing field there. So, I don't understand why the new proposed drainage for Watershed 20 is based on only two-thirds of its current acreage, without seeing anything significant being done to recontour or redirect water in that area. Along in the same area, it looks like there's about a 100-meter-long sidewalk being put in which runs adjacent and parallel to a town sidewalk, and that seems to be some unnecessary impervious cover which is being added. It's students walking on one side of the fence and residents walking on the other side of the fence, I suppose. So, I was wondering if that sidewalk was really necessary, or if that could be taken out to improve the wetlands plans. One other thing I had noticed was, the drainage pipe for the basin, in this diagram, runs in front of the building on the lower left, which is the old, empty Student Activity Center, and it runs in front of that. But I've seen other plans where that drainage pipe is redirected behind the sack and connects into current drainage pipe used to drain runoff from the new dormitories that were built in 2007. So, I'm hoping I could have a clear answer, which way those drainoff pipes will go, and if it is going into the current drainoff for the dormitories, what sort of drainoff do those dormitories currently produce? And we're just going to be adding more drainoff, runoff to those. Secondly, I heard a whole variety of things specified about the semi-pervious cover for the green roof. I heard it described as something between grass and pavement, but then I also heard it being calculated simply as grass. The curve number used in the analysis is 74, which is just identical to grass. But I heard several times that every individual type of surface was taken into account to do the engineering calculations for the runoff numbers. So, I'm wondering what the actual impact of that semi-pervious surface would be if we didn't just count it as grass. And then finally, a good deal has been made about the removal of the parking spaces along Gunpowder Creek Road. I just did a quick look at the parking layout inside the garage underneath. So, the green roof, only about 50% of the green roof is being used to replace the parking spaces along the road. The other 50% of the green roof is just replacing grass, which is currently there. So, I'm wondering how the benefit of putting a green roof where paving used to be is offset partially by putting a green roof over what is currently just grass. So, hopefully, some of those questions will be answered.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Tom Fixlam. Background, I am a water quality scientist retired, and looking at some recent information that was submitted, one of my concerns is regarding the size of the stormwater basin. It is designed for a 100-year storm, although I understand it's actually designed for a 10-year storm, is what I thought I heard. But I think that ignores our changing climate, the fact that all of our predictions for rainfall and runoff are all based upon past data, and that's all changing. As we can see in California, obviously, you know, they're getting a whole lot more water than they ever got at any one particular time. So, you know, looking at something higher and making sure this basin is sufficient to hold, you know, some severe events, I think at least should be looked at.
Thank you.
I'm Representative Mary Maszynski, from 188 South Cherry Street in Wallingford. And I work as a watershed protector in my other civilian job. So, I have been called in sometimes for flooding issues in my other job. And like the previous speaker said, I do want to ask whether a 10-year storm protection is enough. It's, I have been by Choate School when we had an occasional heavy rain event that filled up the entire low point of Gunpowder Brook from the pond, which is north of Christian Street, south all the way to Choate Rink. And during a major storm event like that, the bottom of the trough is not passable, and police cars are there and they direct you to not try to cross it. And I agree with the previous speaker that we are experiencing more heavy precipitation events, and planning for a 10-year storm is probably not going to be protective. Those events when the roadway goes underwater are probably 100-year events, I'm not sure. Erin might know. But 10-year event is, if I heard that correctly, is probably not enough. And my other question is, did the project design for no net increase in flooding of Wharton Brook? I have had constituent complaints about the flooding of apartments where Wharton Brook flows under Center Street. And so, my concern is if the project will hold on to water during heavy rain events or infiltration. If it does send it downstream, I anticipate that the apartments that have been hit twice already might be hit a third time. So, hopefully, infiltration is sufficient that those apartments will not get hit again. They're partly in the floodplain, they shouldn't be there, but they're there, and they've been there since the 1970s. And the passageway under Wharton, where Wharton Brook passes under Center Street has, I think, more fill in the, near the gas station that wasn't there before, which has narrowed that passageway a little bit. That happened during the construction. The gas station did expand their fill and put additional parking in there. So, I believe it has constricted that passageway a little bit. So, I'm just hoping you'll consider those questions and reassure people that the project will not increase flooding or will be, or will not be insufficient to handle a heavy rain event. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jessica Manzaris. I'm on Academy Street.
Can I have your name again?
Speak a little closer.
Jessica Manzaris.
I'm sorry, please.
Jessica Manzaris.
Yes, thank you.
My concern is about the inside of the parking garage. We can assume that the spaces will be cleaned every once in a while, and I'm wondering if you can advise on how often they would be cleaned, where that water would be drained to, and where the drains inside of the parking garage, if they are there, where they're going to.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vinnie Iyanusi. I own Vinnie's Deli in Wallingford.
Again, your name?
Vinnie Iyanusi.
Okay, thanks.
Got it. And I'm really concerned about any water that would go into Wharton Brook. And I don't know much about that green roof, but how does it, does it work as well in the winter as it does in the summer? So, the question is, is when we have those frozen, when everything's frozen, if we have a rainstorm right after that, which had happened, I don't know how many, six, eight years ago, we have one of the worst water height in the Brook, so does that green roof work that well when it's frozen? So, if it's frozen, you get a week of 17-degree weather, and then the weather turns and you have heavy rain, does it work as well? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
John Walworth, Laurelwood Drive. Actually, I live at the headwaters of Wharton Brook and became interested in this project because of that stream. Actually, when you look at it, there's some four square miles of tributary area that flow into Wharton Brook. And it starts very steep at the top of Durham Road, and it flows down at quite an angle until it gets down to near the center of town. And it appears to me, as a past civil engineer, that one of the problems is the maintenance of Wharton Brook itself. There seems to be a backwater issue, and the years that I've been doing this, I note the same thing, where there's sometimes, there's an upstream issue, and a lot of times, there's a downstream issue that's not being addressed and is responsible for the concerns of these citizens. I had an opportunity as a co-founder of the Wallingford Invitational Soccer Tournament to trek across this campus a number of times, including Hurricane Bob in 1991. Choate hosted Twist for 30 years, and during that time, I found them to be an excellent matron of that property. And I believe that that will continue. I've looked at the hydraulic report, and I find that it's not only thorough, but it has addressed a number of the concerns that are being addressed now today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Great work here, too. Great. Thank you all for your time. First, to the commission. It's been a couple of years since I've seen some of you. My name's Dan Krober. I'm a professional engineer. Spent about 20 years doing what these guys are doing here, representing clients on site development projects like this. So, I have a lot of experience in the design of hydraulic models and hydrology models. I'm now doing something else in my career, but I'm excited to be here as a resident tonight, not as a professional. But I still am a practicing professional civil engineer. I live at 391 South Main Street, right up the road. I happen to have also gone to Choate, proud Choate alum, and very proud that we have Choate here as a phenomenal anchor to our town. I really look at this school as something that we all are very proud of, at least I am. One thing we, as Mr. Walworth just mentioned, Choate is an incredible resident of this town. They provide opportunity if it's not the Twist, if it's not the Twist Tournament. Sorry? Sorry? If you could let me finish, I'll get to the wetlands questions next. So Choate is a phenomenal resident of this town, opening up their doors in many ways. Another thing that they are is an environmental steward of this town, of this state. I've worked on many, many campuses. Choate is at the forefront of environmental sustainability. So as we sit here today, we look at this application, I can tell you from firsthand experience, Choate is always at the forefront. They're always pushing further to make sure that they're protecting more, always. Their application, no one's telling them at this commission and planning and zoning, anywhere else, that these projects need to be lead platinum. That's the most sustainable thing that you could do. It has lots of stormwater quality, stormwater quantity requirements that they're doing because they're volunteering to be the best in environmental sustainability. So what that means for this project is that we are treating this project with the most forefront measures of water quality, of water quantity, and how we treat these things. So when we talk about a green roof, we all in Wallingford, maybe we haven't seen that, but this is something new. This is something sustainable. We shouldn't be scared of this. This is really incredible. Instead, Choate could have built a parking lot, surface parking lot like we have all around town. They could have built a parking garage. They could have not put a green roof on it. That's something they could have done. We all could have looked at a parking garage that was sitting there. Instead, we're going to look at something that looks like the lawn that's there today. We shouldn't be penalizing Choate about going above and beyond and doing something that we maybe haven't seen. This is a good thing. Doing a green roof is a very, very good thing. It's going to treat water quality better. It's going to reduce stormwater runoff.
So what is your question, sir?
I'm not, I'm providing comments here on the application.
You're a professional engineer, and you sat here and listened to what we sat here and listened. The only thing I got out of this is they're promoting best business practice to have this application be approved. Is there anything else you, is there anything else that you took out of this?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I've got, I've got three pages of notes. I've reviewed every detail, every report in thorough detail. So if I could, I'd be happy to go through that.
Make it short.
We don't want to, we don't want to hear anything good about the application. Okay. So if I could, as we look at Choate's, we look at Choate's site, we're talking about a broad watershed, talking about a very large watershed. This portion of the watershed is 7% of the overall watershed. Choate's campus, this particular site, is 100 acres. The broader Choate campus, almost 400 acres. Choate's impervious coverage in that area is probably about 10% impervious coverage. We look, we look at my house on South Main Street, I'm probably 60% impervious coverage. Other neighborhoods in this area, probably 50, 60% impervious coverage. Choate is doing this watershed an incredible favor by having a small amount of impervious surface. If Choate wasn't here, this could have been developed as a housing complex with more water being generated in the watershed, which would have caused worse problems. So we, so we need to look at, when we're looking at the context of the watershed, we need to understand what this is. It's a very large green space, for the most part, where everything around it are pretty dense residential homes. So we need to look at that in context of this. When speaking, when I review specifically the wetland activities, our closest activity is 186 feet away from the wetland. In the upper review, I know Aaron's outlined the impacts that we need to look at, stormwater quality, how are we mimicking the watersheds, all of this stuff. I've reviewed the report. It's my professional opinion that those reports have been prepared in accordance with all typical professional guidelines, and that there's actually a reduction in the stormwater that's running off of this site as a result of the project. A result of the two-year storm to the 100-year storm, there's storm modeling, which is in accordance with general engineering criteria, it's actually reducing the amount of stormwater flow in this watershed. The S and E control plans, I've reviewed in detail. They're completely in compliance with the town's standards. They're going to make sure that we protect the watershed during construction. They're going to prevent downstream siltation in the watershed, which is really important. And those are the kind of things, those are the secondary impacts that we look at, those temporary impacts that we look at. So in conclusion, it's my opinion as a professional engineer, that I did this for 20 years, that the stormwater reports have been prepared in typical compliance with engineering practices, reducing the amount of runoff that's being generated as a result of the, of the water quality basin, of a result of the infiltration basin, that there actually will be a decrease in runoff. And what that means for downstream properties is that there's not going to be more water running off on a peak-flow rate perspective. And when we talk about the floodplain in the field areas, Choate's floodplain is actually that, that area that's low-lying, Choate's actually helping the downstream properties because that's not developed. So essentially what's happening, if it's true that the, that the, that the bridge is actually backing up water from this watershed, what happens at that new bridge, water's backing up, it's actually going to flood onto Choate's site. Unfortunately, it may also flood onto some of those, some of those condos that were built in the floodplain. But Choate's property being low and not being developed and being low-lying actually allows floodwaters to come back onto Choate's site, which is actually mitigating further impacts as a result of this. So as I think somebody said, not filling this in, if there was a fill in the floodplain, that would be an issue. That would actually potentially cause worse flooding issues because there's no fill proposed in the floodplain, there's no impact associated with that. But I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman, the commission. Thank you for all you do, and thanks for listening to me for a couple minutes.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Stephen Lazarus, 63 Curtis Avenue. A couple of things. It's a wonderful idea to get rid of parking, surface parking along Gunpowder Creek. There is an implied trade-off that we're getting rid of that parking because all those cars will be able to park in the parking garage. There's been some discussion tonight about how green roofs are new to us here, and most places are new. There's also possibly should be some discussion about how parking garages are new to us in Wallingford in particular. And when someone is driving to Choate, unless there's an inviting signage of some kind outside the parking garage that says, "This is open unregulated parking," none of the people who are parking now on Gunpowder Creek will park in that parking garage unless they're given permission. There's something really kind of forbidding about a parking garage. Nobody drives into one without really knowing that they're allowed to do it. So I'm hoping that Choate will assure us that there will actually be active signage and direction to that parking garage to make, eliminating the surface spaces on Gunpowder Creek, a really good idea. Then I would actually be really excited about it. The second thing, which I know Choate will think is a more positive comment, I think you're underplaying the amount of absorption that you're going to get from that green roof. I think you're underplaying it because right now, there's a slope to that lawn, and that slope encourages surface runoff. That parking garage roof will probably be dead level or darn close to it, and will probably have an impervious perimeter around it. So I really actually think you can think more of that as a retention pond than as a lawn. I think it actually may be better than grass, and I encourage you to look into that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward?
Rob Blanchard, Curtis Avenue. I have a picture I'd like to hand up.
Did you say Ralph Belanger? Pardon me. Did you say Ralph Belanger? Yes, sir.
Rob Blanchard, B.L.A.N.C.H.A.R.D.
Oh, Belanger. All right, thank you.
So picture I just handed out is a picture standing somewhere on the pipe where Gunpowder Creek is underground. And if you look across there, this was some rain we had last week. And you can see it's puddling up there, right? So there's not a lot of infiltration. And I don't think last week was a two, even a two-year event that we had from a, from a rainstorm perspective. So, so I would have some concern that those storm drains, and there are storm drains there that feed into that pipe, you know, they're not collect, that, there's more, not enough capacity there because it's settling on those fields over there. So that's one thing. And a couple other people were asking questions about what kind of year event would cause overflow in some of these retention ponds and, and the bioswales and all this stuff. How many inches of rain is going to saturate the grass roof? And how many inches of rain are going to saturate retention ponds? And how many inches of rain are going to saturate the bioswale? How many inches? Because then it's just strictly overflowing. We're throwing, and that water's going to straight, head straight down into Gunpowder Creek. And so it would be nice to be able to get any answer to how many inches of rain over what period of time, because when that grass roof is saturated, one, it's going to be heavy, and two, it's just going to be draining out the bottom, and it's not modeled, like we said, we've said it's not modeled. But in the worst-case scenario, when all of these things are happening, the worst-case scenario, this is when it's going to be pumping the most water out into the, into the creek. So that's a pretty big concern. Comment on the development, it was interesting for me to hear tonight that they've done enough development there where it's now cumulative that whatever they bring in that area, they have to come to wetlands on. That's significant to me. That says that there's already significant amount of water runoff there, that they have to come here as a significant impact issue and have it evaluated. So that's a concern. I'd like to know a little bit more, too, about the drainage for the dorms, right? So those dorms were put in as a neighbor on Curtis Avenue where they had a shovel in the ground before I knew anything about them. And my understanding is that all the water runoff from those dorms goes directly into the creek because they didn't want to have any infiltration in the ballfields that are there. So that was, that was, that was kind of the start of all this development that's there, right? So I'd like to know a little bit more about that and how that factors in. I'd also like to know if, if the engineering firm actually walked the creek, because they had a report that said that it was piped underground between Farm Hill Road and Hillhouse Avenue, and this nice young lady over here said her yard's flooding, and we, it's, it's open. It's not. So I don't know how much they actually evaluated the entire waterway and how much water's actually coming into it, not only from this development, but prior developments. So, and I think it's appropriate to look back at the last 15 years of development all along this watershed and look at what the cumulative amount of additional water that's been going into this system, because we know it's, it's significant. So, so I think, I think it's both important from a historical view and from a future view. We know that the school has additional development, right? We know that they're looking at potentially adding on to the athletic building. They're looking at doing something with the old student admission center, student activity center. We know that they're potentially looking at a new ice rink. So there's all kinds of other development that they're looking at that if we don't consider those today and look at the continued on a piecemeal basis, it's going to be a challenge for this, for this town to be able to deal with it effectively, and you're going to have more flooding in Wharton Brook. I have a quote from a memo that went along with the approval, and I think Ms. O'Hare was there, of the dorms dated 4506. And at the time, it was Mr. Thompson was the engine, town engineer. And what he said was, "Future projects present the town a better opportunity to mitigate the overall runoff volume from Choate campus." I do not think that's been done. I do not think that that's been done, okay? And so I'm not an engineer, but I am in the finance business, and I have concern about models, right? Models are only as good as the inputs that go into them, right? Whatever, whatever, if it's crap that goes in, it's crap that comes out. So, you know, I'd be wary of the assumptions that, that are being put into the models, and then whether or not the models are even accurate. I don't know if anybody here has evaluated all the individual models to understand their accuracy, and, and that's, that's a concern. And I think somebody made a comment, I don't know who, and this is more of a comment than a question, is that the entire neighborhood dumps into the creek. Well, Choate is 90% of that neighborhood that dumps into that creek. So you can't point the finger at the residents like myself who live on Curtis Avenue as being the culprits in this particular case. The school isn't. They're already considering more development in, in the watershed already. I, you know, we witnessed a surveyor diagonally in the lot across the, diagonally across from this corner. So if you look, this is the southeast corner, the northwest corner. They were surveying that lot. No idea what they're considering, but they were surveying that lot. So there's more to come, and, and I would suggest a more comprehensive look at how they're impacting the watershed in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. If you didn't hear, earlier in the meeting, we talked about downstream and downstream effects, and you were concerned about what's going to happen with future development. They have to come in front of wetlands for any future development that they plan on doing. But we are, we are watching this, and we are taking this into consideration because we know there, we've had problems, Meeting House Brook, there's been a couple other brooks that started out small that are now raceways when it rains. So that, that's been addressed, and it's going to be addressed further, just so you know, but peace of mind that we do look downstream and we look towards the future. We can't have him do things on maybe they're going to do this. They're allowed to develop their land in whatever way they want, as long as they follow rules and regulations. But we are, as a commission, we are watching downstream effects because we know all the good land is gone, and it seems like now development is, is pushing the window. You know, it's working the brooks, they're, they're blowing themselves out wider, and it's causing erosion to people that are downstream. So as far as the answer to that question is, we are watching that, and we are addressing it, right?
I was concerned more specifically with the development that they've done over the past 15 years, which has, if you count this building, is approaching nine acres of hardscape that they're putting in. So it's, it's, it's pretty substantial in itself the past 15 years, and there, there are plans for more. They, they don't share what those exact plans are, which, which is another part of their issue that, that we have as residents. But it's, 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 it's happened, and it's going to continue to happen, and, and I think that specifically needs to be concerned. I understand your, your concerns are broader for the whole town, but in the short run, while we're talking here, this is an issue with the school and how they've developed and continue to overdevelop that watershed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you back for your answer?
We'd love that. So I have more of an observation than a question at this point.
Speak into the mic, please.
I have more of an observation than a question at this point. My name is Jennifer Coyne, and I live on Curtis Avenue. We've heard, Jennifer Coyne, Curtis Avenue. You're welcome. So we've heard through the presentation repeatedly that they're using lead platinum, top-notch environmental practices, green infrastructure practices. And I'd like to remind this commission that in 2015, they built the Landfair Center, the new math building where a historic home used to be. And within a year of building that project, which is just further up the street, you know what I'm talking about, the copper beach that was in front of it died. Now, that copper beach was certainly a And within a year of building that project, which is just further up the street, you know what I'm talking about? The copper beach that was in front of it died. Now, that copper beach was certainly a benefit to everybody in this town to look at, to enjoy, much like green space. So you can put in all the environmental practices, you can boast all about green infrastructure, top-notch, lead platinum, but the copper beach is gone. And obviously, they couldn't foresee that, but I would say, let's, let's think about the development in a residential area. And does it really benefit everybody? And what is that environmental impact? That's all.
All right. While you're there, please stay by the microphone. You guys have the answer for her first question? She was number one.
Twenty-six thousand square feet.
So the parking garage is 26,000 square feet, and the building you quoted as, was it eight or 14?
Fourteen.
So the building is 14, the parking garage is 26,000. So the parking garage is actually significantly larger than the building?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I kind of feel like we should flip the narrative on this. I feel that it's, I feel it's a little deceptive that we're calling it a building. It sounds like a parking garage with the building. As a person who lives in that neighborhood, you're removing the parking, and you put the 70 or the 60, 50 spots, whatever it is, and you're putting in another approximately the same number of spots. But that green space, that lawn is used several times a year. People park on it for, let's say, for example, grandparents' weekend, or deer field days, or graduation. And there's hundreds of cars on there. Taking out 70, you're putting in 70. What about the other 150, the need for the other 150? Where are they going to go? On Academy? On Curtis? Where? So are we going to add more hardscape? What's the, as somebody else said, what's the next plan? Another parking garage? I don't know. I think it's something to really strongly consider.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? If not, the questions that you brought up were going to be addressed now. Then at that time, we're closed to public hearing. So Tom or...
We may answer by committee.
Speak through the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. We'll probably answer by committee if that's okay. So we answered the question about the square footage of the parking garage.
All right. If you could speak up more.
Sorry, I'll get closer. The question was, will the drive aisle, where we're removing the spaces, will the drive aisle stay? Yes, the drive aisle will stay. Is there any other parking lots that are off the plan? No, this is the plan that we're presenting to you this evening. There's not anything else outside the project limits that are part of this application. There was a discussion about the Peach watershed and its reduction. The area slightly changed, but we did a calculation that the flow or the water runoff, and I think his second, second comment asked about the sidewalk. So the sidewalk itself results in some additional flow. So we balanced the flow by slightly adjusting the watershed. So the flow itself, while the watershed area changed slightly, the analysis point at Christian resulted in no change in runoffs. The volume of water did not change. Maybe it's two sidewalks question.
Yep, two sidewalks. So that's really in relation to just some safety issues on campus. In the past, Choak has tried to promote students walking within their campus limits. Like I said, it was a safety issue from the past that has had us developing sidewalks within, within the campus itself, which also lends itself to why the parking spaces get removed. We're trying to limit kids walking next to cars.
There was a question about, and I think it's come up before, is the green roof being modeled as grass? So as engineers, we have certain categories that we put into the model. We have woods, we have pavement, we have building, we have gravel, we don't get into much, but we're plowed earth. And those are categories that are put into the, those are categories that are published. And based upon the category, it then gives you a runoff number. It's functioning, it's grass. So when this commission walks out there, it's grass. So we believe, it was our professional opinion, it has a grass surface, it has a green, it has a thickness to it, and we, it was, it was appropriate in our sense. And it is grass. It's functioning as grass. It's not artificial, it's real grass. So when we put it into, so we felt very strongly that, in fact, that was the appropriate model. There is no other, other surface material that would replicate that. We did, once again, it's based upon the surface material. And we apologize, we're a little confusing about the, I think there was a little questions about storm events. And I may lump a couple of questions to you on this. The detention basins are designed for the 100-year storm, okay? I think we were mixing conversations about the biodepression, and we'll call that a rain garden at the front of it. That's not designed for the 100-year storm. That's probably designed for the first flush, or the one-inch rainstorm is a traditional thing we do, water quality. But the basin itself is designed for the 100-year storm. The piping connecting to all these systems is typically designed for the 10-year storm. So the conveyance system is typically to the 10. Water quality is usually for the first flush, that one inch, but the basin itself is for the 100-year storm. And I'm going to jump a little bit into a later comment. Somebody made a very good point about we're seeing, we're experiencing greater rainfalls, and we agree with that. So, and I think the comment was well-taken. He said, you know, a lot of the, we're looking at old data. We, as a company, and I think other people have caught on board now, we were one of the first firms to adopt the new NOAA rainfall events. This is modern data, it's real-time data, and actually, you go on the computer and you plug in your actual address and it generates a rainfall data. We are not using the old DOT lists anymore. We are using this new, modern and accurate and up-to-date rainfall data. So we agree, we are experiencing things, and that's why we use the new rainfall data. There was another question about what is, what does a 100-year storm look like in this situation? So if you plug in the NOAA data, it's eight and a half inches of rainfall over 24 hours is what, what the 100-year equates, equates for this particular, significant. Probably under the old data, it was probably only five inches. Seven, five inches. So you're definitely seeing NOAA seeing that these changes. So we have accommodated that in our design. There was some discussion about how the green roof will function in the winter. It'll function identical to, to, as lawn. So it will, it will generate some runoff. Traditionally, we don't find, you know, those heavy rainstorms that we're seeing during the summer months occur during frozen conditions. As I indicated, if you look at the hydraulic modeling, they assume all water, all soil, when you're modeling it, is fully saturated. They want you to see the worst case. They don't want to assume everything's dry and all the water gets soaked, soaked. So that saturated model approach also reflects the, the winter conditions, and that water will get directed into there. There was one discussion about who's reviewing it. You have a town engineer that has a copy of our engineer report, and, and that's being reviewed by your town staff. Appreciate the comment about the flat green roof, probably getting more infiltration than we're budgeting, but once again, we're modeling that as grass as it is representing. In terms of the pipe and puddling up, this is, once again, it's this low point where there's water. Based upon mapping, I don't believe there's a lot of drainage inlets that are going along the fields. So yes, as with natural fields, there is times where water puddled, games get canceled, but that's infiltration, that water eventually infiltrates into the ground and goes on its way. We're not changing that situation. If we do have puddling in that area, games can't be played on the, on the sports field. But that's something Choak has managed for many, many years. About the how many inches of rainfall, what, a 24? So there's a question about, I guess, cleaning the garage. Typically, that is, I mean, the nice thing, it's undercover, so there's not a lot to be done there. You know, if, what we typically see is, you know, maybe some cars come in off the roads with some sand that they picked up on their tires, that simply gets swept up. But there's the benefit of, we don't have to sand it, we don't have to ice it because it's all undercover. So really, from a maintenance standpoint, garages are fairly simple. But yeah, anytime, sometimes sand and grit gets tracked into the thing, but that'll be swept up and exposed off of sight.
Comment about the use of the garage. So the use, as I understand it, is going to be primarily the staff there and day students, like a couple of people have mentioned. So there will be no gates, there will be no blocking of it. It's open to the public and people like, like it is now. It also may make the lot that you see there to the right of Christian Street more available, so there is something visible there as a parking spot for maybe someone that doesn't know the Choak campus. But most of the users of that parking garage will recognize it over time.
I think it's going to be good for you to make a notation that the gentleman in the, from the audience that talked about signage. Choak definitely needs to improve their signage, because when they have soccer events or, I don't want to say graduation, because it's a nightmare of graduation, but some of the larger events they have, there's no direction to where to park. They have staffing out there to direct people, but you get an older couple, they want to get as close as they can because they don't want to hike three miles to watch their grandson or their granddaughter graduate or play soccer. So I think signage is something that's going to come up again down the road. It's not a wetlands issue, but I think you should make notations.
Yeah, I think signage is, because I'm traveling college tours, a lot of websites are really good at directing you. If you're going to come visit the site for admissions, it tells you exactly where to park. So I would, I would think Choak would probably embrace that on their website. There's always a link if you visit, and they'll direct you to, to the appropriate parking. But yeah, luckily, they do have on-staff that will manage that. So while it's not a wetlands issue, it is a comment that came up several times this evening.
Okay. Have you answered all the audience's questions?
I, I think that, I'm like... So that, in terms of saturation, those are, we're designing the basins for the 100-year storm, so it's an eight, it can handle an 8.3-inch of rainfall over 24 hours.
Sir, you've got to use the mic if you want to speak, please.
How many inches, over what period of time, is going to saturate all of those pieces? And then to expand on the discussion that, that we talked about how they work in the winter, right? When, when, when those are all frozen and there's no infiltration and you get a major rainstorm and that happens, that's going to all flow right into, into the creek, right?
So a couple of things there. One, as I've said, is the drainage modeling and as published through the Soil Conservation Service assumes it fully saturated condition. They want you to consider the worst-case scenario. So the eight and a half inches is, 8.3 inches is assuming fully saturated. So additional saturation of the soil will not have any negative impact because it's already built into the model. I think NRCS assumes if you can make things work at that time, if it's dry soil, it'd just be even less return. In terms of, of winter management, we have designed, we have never experienced any of these features. As I said, green roof might be new to Wallingford and new to this commission. We've done several of them, and they continue to function very well in the winter. We have not experienced any change in the amount of runoff. And in terms of the, and I think that frozen condition is still represented quite well in the fully saturated soil. Basically, it's assuming you're getting a lot of runoff, so.
So all your design work that you're talking about is all done with saturated soils?
NRCS, they, if you look at the bold print or the fine print in the thing, yes, they want you to consider worst-case scenario. Yes, when, when water, when soil, and then when soil just can't take more. And what does that result? Potentially, you're going to have more runoff, and that's what they want you to consider. So any times during the summer where we have drier soil, you ultimately will result in less runoff and promote infiltration. But maybe it's the nature of engineers and, you know, Soil Conservation Service, the nature is to be conservative.
Okay. All right. We have two more. Come up to the mic, please. Your name again?
I, Phil Uker, Curtis Avenue. I apologize, I did have a lot of questions before, so I might have glossed over one. I appreciate you did answer the question about the Peach watershed, watershed 20, but if I interpreted that correctly, you took away about one acre to accommodate for the sidewalk to make the runoff less. That if that one acre was included, the runoff from watershed 20 would probably be greater in this development. But the question that wasn't answered was about the direction of the drainage pipe going in front of the student activity center versus other plans that have it going behind and tying into the drainage for the dormitories?
So on the drainage alignment, it will continue as shown right there. It will, it will no longer go behind the student center. That was original plan, and like Aaron said, we're working through various iterations. This is where we've landed on the alignment.
May I answer your question, sir? Is there anyone else?
So one question on that. So the Peach area, under existing conditions, is only 0.7 acres. And under proposed conditions, it's 0.5. So we did not remove an acre of that area.
I, there's one follow-up question for the commission, not, not for the team here. And they, and they didn't answer the question if they actually walked the site, so they can maybe answer that one, too. But the question for the commission was, can any approval be set with a, a condition of approval that, that future development requires disclosure of future programs for development on that area? Thanks.
Aaron, I believe that's already in place, right?
I'm sorry, I was writing, what was the question?
He asked that if anything further or future becomes, future development will become, have to come in front of wetlands before it's approved?
Yes, for that, under that regulation that we call the surfaced area provision.
My question was that future development would include a master plan of all future development that they're planning for, for that site?
You want an answer to that, Mr. Chairman?
I don't want an answer. It's common sense. Choak doesn't know what they're going to do from year to year, no more than we do. So I think the answer is sufficient that they put the new regulation into it to review any further activity, and we go from there.
And to respond, we have walked the site. I mean, frankly, I've been working on the campus for quite some time, so I've been out there many a time over the last decade of looking at it. So, and we're very familiar with that. And we've had the luxury of working on other projects at Wallingford, so we understand the watershed itself, too.
Well, I know that personally, I've been out there numerous times between the children being on teams and just being out there, and the ground is saturated. It takes a long time for it to dry up, so.
So one of the major concerns that a lot of people have is downstream flooding because the water's entering so quickly. But I live up, I live east of the campus. I drive through here quite often. Lived my whole life driving down Christian Street just to get into town. But Gunpowder Creek, the, the edge of Gunpowder Creek, as far as I can tell, I've only done limited trespassing on campus, is not really planted, it's exposed. Perhaps planting, coming up with a plan for a riparian buffer would help uptake some of that water and slow down any future flooding that we may have as our rainfall increases. Because I know that the whole thing has been updated for the 100-year plan being 8.5 inches. I, we've actually discussed on the commission just to kind of like leave that language out because it's, it's deceiving and just talk about the rainfall. So at 8.5 inches per day, I think last year we had a storm that dropped 10. In the last couple of years, I think...
Not over a 24-hour. It's, so it's measured over 20, maybe it was 10 over several days.
It was a short storm that caused severe flooding in town. It may have been, lose track of time, two, three years. track of time, two, three years ago. Within the last five years, we had a major storm. But that's just something that we just kind of like to look to now is to talk about that number. But I think that if we, if you're able to develop a plan, and you do have control, Choak, I should say, does own a huge portion of the waterway for Wharton Brook, Gunpowder Creek being a tributary of, to manage that as one of the, one of the guys over here had pointed out, to manage that better, upstream, downstream, to help that, take up that flow wherever you can, to slow it down as it goes all the way to the Quinipiac. I hope that's acceptable and something to consider in the future.
To your point, Chairman McKee, do you mean in the future, meaning by next month?
No. No. I think it's something to consider, though, because it's a major concern of everybody who lives in this, in this particular area, the watershed, is how fast that water gets to Wharton Brook and how high that water gets later on. Both upstream and downstream, actually, of Wharton Brook because the people, you know, who are near Hill House on North Elm Street have problems with flooding. And we have to consider, we have to figure out what's going on there. As a separate issue from this application.
All right. One more time, is there anybody who'd like to speak? All right. The time is 9:30.
Chairman, I've got to do some housekeeping here, if I may. First, the wetland commission would need to request, am I correct, Attorney Sanaviva, an extension to get us to March 4th, public hearing, for the public hearing to be continued to March 4th?
I have no idea.
Yeah. You granted an extension to get us from January 4th to here.
So, they could act tonight, that's correct.
And in your letter, your count was 29 days. So, you've got plenty of days. They have 65 days extension by statutory language. So, they've used 29 and it will take another, whatever it is, 35 to get to March 4th. So, the commission requests, that's how it works, the commission requests an extension from the applicant.
This would be nice after the fact, that I wanted to close the public hearing and then address to the applicant what the next process would be. But since you brought it up now and they're aware of it.
Yes, and I have other things, if I may. So, you request and...
My reflection, Aaron, is I'd like to close the public hearing at 9:34.
Okay, I just have a few more things. I have to just do some homework here, a little. I would, as environmental planner, I'm asking for the next time, for the next public hearing, if the applicant could respond to all these letters that came in, they've gotten copies of them. There's about 10 letters that have come into the file before tonight. The most soonest was yesterday, a letter came in. So, to respond in some fashion to those letters and then to respond to my comments in my environmental planner's report of January 27th, perhaps that haven't been directly answered tonight, and to respond to a few other comments that came in on January 27th in your stormwater management plan. I have a few tweaks to that. We can, we don't have to take time tonight. I can meet with the applicants in the interim and we can get that all cleaned up. And then, tonight, really, it would be appropriate, if you're so disposed, to deal with the question of significant impact activity. We haven't done that yet in the process. The commission does that with every application. So, to vote on that, if it's deemed a significant activity or not. If you do, let me just say, if you do decide it's a significant impact activity, which I'm not suggesting, I do not recommend that, I would say no, I don't think it is. But should you decide it is, it's not another public hearing, it's folded into this ongoing public hearing.
I'm trying to get these people out of here a decent hour. My thought with this was to close the public hearing because there's no, nobody else has any more questions, and then to continue our meeting with the applicant and ourselves with significant activity and to address all the things you just brought up, the 20 things or 15 things that you say haven't been addressed yet. The applicant will either answer them or he'll get back to you in the next 30 days. We need to ask for an extension, which was part of my presentation after the fact. So, is it all right if I close the public hearings for these people to go home in a decent hour?
No, you can end the discussion for tonight. It's called continue. So, yes, you would continue the public hearing to March 4th. That's the terminology.
I'm going to continue the public hearing to March 4th?
Yes.
But there won't be any public input. Once we close the public hearing, this is the last, this ends the public input side of the hearing.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. If the public hearing is closed, then the applicant cannot provide new information to this commission. So, you have to get it during the course of the public hearing. The question really is, is whether or not there's a need for additional information. If this commission thinks that it has enough information in the volumes of papers and reports that have been submitted to you, the couple-hour, two-and-a-half-hour hearing tonight, the information that's been presented to you, if you feel, you as a team, as a commission, feel that you have sufficient information and you can close the public hearing and you can decide tonight, or if you think that you need time to ruminate over the information, think about it, maybe review some of the reports that are already part of the record, you can do that. If you believe there's a need for additional information, then the public hearing has to stay open.
I don't believe there's any new information that's going to be requested. I believe there's information that needs to be answered so the environmental planner understands what that information is.
We certainly can have, you know, we can have inter, we can have communications with your planner, with your environmental planner. That's not an issue.
Okay. Are you all set, Aaron?
No new information.
We gave everybody a chance to come out tonight and speak on your behalf as residents, what your concerns are. All your concerns should have been answered. That's why we did, everybody, they wrote them down and they answered them afterwards. So, anybody else that has any questions can talk to Aaron about it. The next meeting we have is going to be, to fine-tune what we've already got here. Significant activity is one, and then whether or not this thing is going to go forward or it's going to be denied. So, I don't believe the public, you don't need to have another public hearing and have you people come with another flock of questions because I think we've answered them all tonight. But if, you know, if somebody disagrees, then you need to contact Aaron and she'll take the question and we'll address it at the next meeting. Does that sound feasible?
And I was thinking, any little changes I have could be handled as conditions of approval. I'm just pointing that out. It doesn't have to be a whole long thing. That's another way to address little dangling things.
The little dangling things that you have are things that are pending, they're not something new. You've already done your 11th hour, what you need to have addressed, right?
I'm talking about things that came in on Friday that I don't know, maybe I could do it right now if I have some time. Maybe I could do it right this second. If you want me to go through...
No, I don't want you to go through what you didn't do on Friday, tonight. Save them for next month. All right. Thank you, audience. Residents, thank you for coming out tonight. And we're going to have the meeting on March 2nd?
Continued to March 4th, yes.
March 4th, the next meeting will be March 4th.
The public hearing is continued to March 4th, yes.
We have to continue in order to process the information. And honestly, other people can send in letters, but the next meeting, they just won't really be coming. It's a public hearing. Yeah, I was wondering why it wasn't the first.
March 1st.
I apologize. March 1st.
Because we have 28 days in this month.
Sorry. Aaron, so we can, we can put this to bed tonight, this application, so that we can move on with the rest of our agenda?
Can't listen to two people again. I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I want to continue with, I want to put this, I want this to be done tonight so we can move on with the rest of the applications we have tonight?
Oh, yes. Yes. So... I was under the impression you continued, you have ended the hearing for this evening and continued to March 1st? Or are we going to vote on significant impact? We can do that on March 1st, if you'd like.
No, we're going to do significant impact tonight.
Okay.
All right. Before we do the significant impact, would you give us a letter of extension? We need a letter of extension.
Anything the chairman requests, we'd be happy to comply with.
Are the members of the commission ready to vote significant activity tonight?
Yes.
And I'm going to have one of you make a motion.
Do it just like Deb usually does.
Read the application number. Do I have a second?
Second.
God, please.
We're discussing how the next part of this goes. You know, we're all new here.
Okay, you can discuss, you can kick it back and forth whether or not you think it should be a significant impact activity a little bit or not. You can just call for a vote, Nick.
Were there any questions before the vote? Do you have any questions?
Um, no.
I'm all set.
Vote then.
Yes.
Yes? Mike, yes?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. So, that's done. So, that, we'll see you next month on March?
1st.
March 1st.
Thank you.
Just because we're so used to Jimmy Deb just like, boom, bada-boom, bada-boom. And he articulated so well.
Thank the commission for taking charge, handling it. Okay. We're under Old Business Application A 1812.2, 32 Barnes Road.
They are not ready to go forward.
Okay. Application A 2212.2, 1299 South Broad Street, Hutton Street 21 LLC, car wash facility.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. For the record, Attorney Carl Landolina, representing the applicant. Joined this evening by Sarah Castagliola, a registered professional engineer, and Sagan Simko, who is a soil scientist, both of them from BL Engineering. My understanding, I've just joined this team, this was received at your meeting in December. It was discussed in, I think, on January 4th, at your meeting in January. And based upon discussions with the commission and with staff, our team has been looking, or especially, you know, cooperating with Ms. O'Hare. And I, we're ready to present, I guess, the final set of plans and hoping for a decision tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that, I'll ask Sarah to take over.
So, we have met Sarah Castagliola, BL Companies, Licensed Professional Engineer. We met with Erin O'Hare to address her comments and we provided a response to comments letter, incorporating everything that she asked for. The notable changes to this plan from the one you have previously seen is additional plantings located along the Upland Review area adjacent to the wetland, which is towards the west of the site, as well as modifying the previously proposed riprap apron to be a level spreader, which will dissipate the flows more balanced. I'd be happy to go through the plans if you want, but those are the notable changes.
If you go through the plan quickly. Do you want to bring that easel out and turn it a little bit? Okay.
This is our existing conditions plan. So, the site is known as 577 South Broad Street in Meriden and 1299 South Broad Street in Wallingford. The town line is right here and it is right through the middle of the site, slightly larger portion on the Meriden side. So, we are doing permitting with the City of Meriden concurrently. This is our demolition plan. The site is currently developed with a banquet hall. We will be completely removing the parking lot and all impervious on the Wallingford side of the lot and restoring it with a conservation seed mix, lawn seed mix, and additional plantings. The entirety of the proposed development will occur on the City of Meriden side. It is a car wash building. It's a one-lane vacuum, or a one-lane conveyor system. And then there is a series of vacuum stalls located in front of the building. We are proposing five rain gardens, one of which will infiltrate to convey the stormwater discharge from the site. It will be treated with a hydrodynamic separator as well as the rain gardens themselves and eventually outlet to the west of the site towards the wetlands as they do today.
Hang on just a moment. Where's the dividing line?
This thicker line is the...
Okay, so everything to the left of the line is grass, whale, grass, bio, grass?
It's a mix of seed mixes.
Conservation seed mix, yep.
The landscaping plan.
That's all right. You keep going.
So, this lighter colored hatch is standard lawn seed mix and this striped hatch is conservation seed mix located closest to the wetlands. And then, as you can see, we have a variety of plantings, a mix of tree and shrubs along the Upland Review area. the upland review area, adjacent to the wetlands.
Is this where the retention ponds are, areas?
So the five rain gardens, there is one here, one here, one here, one here, and one here. And they all have under drains that then convey them into a pipe system, which will discharge to a level spreader located right here.
And will, what will these rain gardens handle for year storms? 25-year, 30-year, 50-year?
They will all, they're all designed to handle the 100-year storm.
Before they overflow?
Correct. And so ultimately, all the peak flows, as well as peak runoff volumes discharged from the site are reduced for all storm events.
Please continue.
I think that might have been it. The last plan I have is the erosion and sedimentation control plan, which was designed in guidance of the 2002 Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion Sediment Control. There's a variety of silt sacks at catch basins, a stone construction entrance, and then we have silt fence around the site, as well as hay bales adjacent to the wetlands for additional protection, and a temporary sediment trap.
Where's the snow shelf gone?
Proposed snow storage is in this area, which, this is sloped into the parking lot, so any melt from the snow stockpile will then enter the catch basins and be treated with a hydrodynamic separator. I believe that was my last sheet, so I can go back if you have any other questions or...
Commissioners, any questions? Carolyn? Ally?
I have one more.
The soil's been tested out there for?
Yes, we had our wetland scientist out there. He did inspections in the wetland areas, as well as we have a geotechnical report.
And what was the outcome with the bubbling red water that's coming out of the ground?
That is, Sagan, go ahead.
Yeah, Sagan Simko from BL Company.
Name and address.
Sagan Simko from Meriden, with BL, the soil scientist and wetland scientist for the project. The red-orange bubbling is just iron oxidizing bacteria, that's a normal situation.
It's normal to be removed, or it's normal it's going to stay there?
It's normal to be there. It normally happens under, if there's a high rainfall event, you'll normally see that leach out into the surface water.
So has any testing been done out there as far as what's buried under there? Because I don't believe it's natural fill. There's been some question that there may be some debris that's been buried there on the site.
It appears there was fill there. I don't know what the geotechnical report says, though.
So you're not sure if there's an environmental cleanup or not with this red bubbly water that's coming out of the ground?
I mean, again, that's naturally occurring oxidizing bacteria, iron oxidizing bacteria, it's naturally occurring. It wouldn't have anything to do with buried fill causing it. It's something that you can find anywhere naturally, whether there's buried fill or, you know, in a farm field.
It would be nice, though, if it is a, as part of a cleanup, to remove it.
It can't be cleaned up. It's bacteria, it just, you can't clean it up. You'd have to basically bleach it.
If there's a car or truck or a big piece of steel under there that's causing this...
So I'm very familiar with iron bacteria. When I lived on Ridgeland Road, we had a wetland right behind my apartment, and our apartments were set up as like a fourplex, so I had, you know, basement upstairs, downstairs was all mine, and I had a sump continually running in my basement. And we had iron bacteria in the groundwater, which would clog up our pipes in the sump, and then it would flow out into the wetland behind us, where there was a large area of it, and it was literally impossible to get rid of.
But was it orange?
It was orange. So it's, it's a bacteria, it eats iron that was in the groundwater, and then it just poops this orange slime. It basically pooped slimy rust.
As I understand, it's a naturally occurring.
It is, it is naturally occurring, and it is naturally occurring, and it's just, you just really can't get rid of it. I would actually treat our sump with iron out, but that would control it for a period of time, and I would have to just keep up on that. But it's a bacteria, I mean, you'd have to sterilize everything to get rid of it, and it doesn't, it responds to even small amounts of iron that, you know, may exist naturally in the water. So I don't know what kind of disturbances were really under our house. I think there was a spring, actually. I think that, that wetland was spring-fed. You know, it's the wetland between Ridgeland Road and like Apple Lane, and it just, it's just there.
That's, that's interesting. I find it interesting, because being on this commission 35 years or so, the only other location we saw anything like this was coming out of the old Wallingford dump, where they dumped everything and burned it back in the 50s and 60s. That was the only other source I ever come across, that red, that's water.
Could I interject or add something? On the environmental planners' report that I went, sent out, oh gosh, I can't find...
Microphone, Erin.
Environmental planners' report I sent out previously on this site, I had the color photographs of the orange, you know, iron, iron-eating bacteria, and it is, you find it in nature, it's naturally occurring, but I think the question that Commissioner Kerr has is, what's under there that is feeding this, that's iron-rich? What kind of iron-rich rock or something is under there? And when they regrade it and put in the rain gardens, et cetera, are they going to unearth some of this stuff? And that's a good question, but as far as, like Commissioner McKean said, you know, it's very hard to get rid of. I did attach an EPA document to my environmental planners' report, a one-page thing on this particular kind of bacteria, very hard to get rid of. It is a problem down south in southern United States, where it'll foul pipes.
Okay, we're not down south.
But, but one of the things that we have in our soil and in our water is basalt, and basalt is an iron-y rock.
Right, iron-rich rock, right.
So there's, that's just part of our geology, and that's what we're kind of stuck with in certain areas here.
Right, now, I wanted to say to Commissioner Kerr's question, this is the geotechnical report that they submitted on Friday, and it does talk about what they found in there was, in the fill, in the area of the rain gardens, fragments of asphalt, brick, and polystyrene, and a two-foot to six-foot thick layer of organic matter at certain borings, not all over. So, but there's probably more interesting things down there. They only put in like six borings, you know, they didn't do the whole site. So I think the, how we could address this is, in the condition of approval, say something like, we'd have to finesse the wording, but care should be taken regarding removal of certain material, or whatever, however you want to say that, or reporting to us what is found under there, or something like that, I don't know.
There, you don't have any recommendations of conditions of approval?
I actually worked with Sarah tonight from 6:00 to 6:30, and I have eight conditions of approval. If you want to move forward with this, I could read them very quickly. I didn't have time to type them up for you. They have worked with me, their revised site plan, which you got Friday night.
I know, I know, but.
It's great.
A lot of these things should have been done long before tonight. This happens all the time. Everything happens tonight. Anyway, have any, any questions? Mike? Jeff?
I'm set.
All right, are you all set with your presentation?
I guess I have one question for Sarah before she sits down. Could you just say, I just found an answer to my question, your response to one of my questions was, in the report, was ground, the highest groundwater elevation encountered during borings was at three, I'm sorry, 238, 238 feet elevation, beneath the bottom of this temporary sediment trap. But the actual bottom of the temporary sediment trap is proposed to be the same elevation, 238. So can you just help me understand that?
Yes, so the way a temporary sediment trap works is, half of the storage is considered wet storage, and half of the storage is considered dry storage, and those storage amounts are calculated based on the lot area of what is draining to the temporary sediment trap. It's detailed in the 2002 Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion Sediment Control. So the wet storage amount is always wet, and that basically allows any water that comes into the temporary sediment trap to settle out, so that the sediment stays at the bottom, and only the clean water is able to leave the temporary sediment trap and continue downstream. So there is a stone weir, and that is the elevation that water is able to leave the temporary sediment trap, and then the dry storage above that is for any larger storm events. But so, the wet storage amount is always wet, so even if groundwater was higher than where it currently is, it would be wet no matter what.
All right, so I had, I think we should move forward tonight, if we can. So what I, in the condition of approval, I just, I want the town engineer to review that, because the borings were done in September when we had a severe drought. So it will be higher, the groundwater table might be higher today, so planning and zoning gets a crack at it, so I think we could approve it if we want to move forward with a wording on that.
Erin, what have you got, any other questions? So everything they've...
No, that was the only, that is...
But this is all set? You've got all the, they've done everything you wanted them to do?
Now, the new plan that came in on Friday, I am asking them, as a condition of approval, to add a sign to where the wetland, there's lawn, and then there's meadow mix. The meadow mix is supposed to stay high, like two, three feet high. So I'd like them to add a sign, "Natural meadow area, do not mow," because otherwise they're going to mow it like lawn, okay? And add to the, and to the, your stormwater management maintenance plan to add a responsible party's name, and you forgot the level spreader. So to add those two things to the stormwater maintenance management plan that came in on, dated January 27. And to put a sign in that we just talked about, "Natural area of the meadow, natural meadow area, do not mow, or mow once every three years," which is what is recommended. And to, as far as the temporary sediment basin, to design that basin, to install a basin to the, meeting the approval of the town engineer, with regard to what we just talked about, the level of groundwater. And to, as we talked about on the phone, to extend the plantings to wrap around the southwestern corner of the property within this upland review area. And you had indicated, Sarah, you were going to provide a cross-section to the town engineer so she could see that.
There actually is one in the 2002 Connecticut Guidelines, so I can provide that as well.
Oh, no, but she had, we'll talk about it, she had a different opinion about the water, the definition of wet storage, so minor tweak to that. If we need it, it'll just be a minor tweak to that.
All right.
If you could just give me a second. Is that eight? I thought I had six.
Where's the letters requested from the DOT, or the State Highway Department about the stormwater?
Yes, that letter came in. Sarah, do you want to address that letter? Do you, do you know what I'm talking about?
Was it the comments they had provided previously, or is this new?
It's about a one-page letter that talks about five permits you'll need from the state of Connecticut.
Stormwater management in that letter? I don't think you're prepared to go forward.
Sarah, who's the owner of the property?
It's Colella LLC.
All right, because you're, just a nice little pamphlet you put together that says that the owner's going to be responsible for everything that happens. Are they aware that they're going to be responsible for all these things you're talking about, the mowing and what's can happen and what not happen?
So the owner is going to be, the current owner will be selling the property. We have our applicant here tonight, Hutton Street 21 LLC, and they will become the new property owner.
So they're aware that they're going to have to accept whatever you've put down on your packet here, that that'll be their responsibility?
Yes, and they can hear any additional comments you provide as conditions of approval tonight.
Well, I don't think Erin's ready to go forward with it.
Okay, I have those five conditions of approval, but other than that, I'm good.
Well, what's, has the DOT got anything about stormwater management?
This is the DOT letter. Are you familiar with it, Sarah? Do you want me to read it? You can come take a quick...
Does it have anything there regarding stormwater?
Uh, let's see, let's see. Why don't you, I'm going to, you read that page, I'll read this page.
I actually know what this letter is. This was comments, due to being on the state route, we have to go for an encroachment permit from DOT, and those were comments that they had on the application as a whole, which we've already addressed, and anything that they commented were already included in this plan set.
So there's nothing in there regarding stormwater management?
No, it was mainly signage, striping, things like that.
All right, so Erin, you don't, you want us a condition of approval, but what are they? Would not, I mean, you wrote them down, you should have copied them and handed them out. You didn't have to type them up. So what do we got to do? We got to write them down again?
I can read them slowly, okay, okay.
You read them slowly, they'll go into the record, and we'll vote. Those are the conditions of approval.
Okay.
All right? Read them slowly.
Install a sign at the beginning of the meadow area that says, "Natural meadow, dash, mow once every three years." Okay. Submit a revised stormwater management plan to include the responsible party, identity, and contact number. And to include the level spreader.
Okay. Person responsible in contact for what?
Well, that's, we'd get that on every stormwater management maintenance plan.
What is it responsible for what?
For implementing the stormwater management maintenance plan. A log, so quarterly, you do a log, and you keep a log.
So that, but that spells out in the condition of approval, the person responsible for the stormwater management plan.
Yeah, well, they handed in a plan, they just forgot to put the responsible party and the contact number, and the level spreader.
But you're, go ahead.
Right, so that's a condition of approval. They're going to hand in a revised stormwater maintenance management plan, or management maintenance plan, to add the responsible party and ID and contact number, and the level spreader, how to maintain your level spreader, okay? Add a note to the plan that four inches of topsoil is to be installed in the meadow area. I should say that Sarah said it's in there, I couldn't find it, okay. And the last one, well, the last one I have is to extend the plantings in the upland review area to wrap around the southern corner of the upland review area. I don't know if Sarah talked about the plantings, but there's plantings along the wetlands, and it's all great, except I'd like it wrap around the bottom of the upland review area. And I guess the last one is for the temporary, the design of the temporary sediment trap, the final design of the temporary sediment trap to be approved by the town engineer, which will happen under the planning and zoning regulation, application.
Okay, commissioners, is there any other conditions of approval? Any resident? Ally, Caroline, Nick?
I'm still waiting to see what the stormwater, what, how the state's going to address the stormwater.
Okay, I did talk to our Director of Public Works on that. He's aware of it, but he said that is a state of Connecticut problem, it's not, you know.
I told you last month that that state highway up there, and I wanted to see documentation, that the state highway is going to address the water problem that's out in front of the...
Yes, but I, my understanding, it's not from this site? Maybe Sarah could address that? That there is an existing problem, but this proposal's not going to change, make it worse, unless you can tell me that it is. And I can, I can tell the town engineer, because they get a crack at it next month with the, the next planning and zoning meeting.
I'm not ready to move forward to this, so I don't care what you say. I ask you, simple thing is have them address it. Now I... Now I hear about there's four permits that they need to do this. I don't care about the permits, if it's a wastewater or whatever. I want to make sure the state is aware of what's going on out there on the road, and I know they do. The last rainstorm we just had, they had two guys out there with rakes and shovels cleaning the catch basins off so the water could go into catch basin because it was going right down Route 5.
I understand, and I called the district that Ra...that the Public Works Director gave me, it was the wrong district, and he referred me, but the state has to do that, has...doesn't...I don't...unless you can tell me otherwise, it doesn't have to do with this project.
Yeah, in regards to this application, the stormwater from the site, in both existing and proposed, drains to the west and away from the state route. There's no additional flow that will be going towards the state route.
I will follow up on that, Nick. I mean, it is a problem, but it's not...I don't believe it has anything to do with this applicant. We could add a condition of approval regarding what you're concerned is when they dig up something, is it going to be iron-rich something that is going to be...that's lying under there?
That's another hope. Maybe Bonnie and Clyde's car is buried there, and that's what's rusted.
With Bonnie and Clyde?
Yeah, with them in it. We're talking about two different issues here.
Yes.
Water running down Broad Street.
Yes.
Starts north of them, that comes down by them. There's water coming off of that site onto Broad Street or Route 5. They don't have any...way that building's pitched from the front of the restaurant that's there now out to the street, there's no water that gets out in the road?
No, it is currently pitched to the west.
Presently?
Yeah, presently, and it will in our proposed condition as well. And actually, we'll be improving the site since currently it's entirely or mostly impervious, and we will be removing all the impervious area in the Wallingford side.
That should approve it at least on the Wallingford.
All right, Erin, hold on. Commissioners, any other conditions of approval?
No.
I don't know if we included it with her list, but I noticed in the bank, there's a lot of garbage, just buckets and stuff, probably from the restaurant.
Oh, thank you.
I didn't know if that would be a part of the approval.
Yes. Maybe Sarah could address that. I put it in my comments, and I don't know how you responded, but yes, I wanted a commitment that you...the applicant would take the...there's a blue couch, several buckets, trash, leaves, Christmas trees stuffed down right on the wetland edge where your...where the white fence meets the wetlands.
Our operations and maintenance plan does address trash removal.
Well, this is today. It's there today, not...not when they're going to clean it up two years from now.
For the record, my name is Nicholas Plummer, I'm the applicant. I don't think I need to touch anything that's not on the property that I'm buying. I think that's...that doesn't make any sense. I don't control the wetlands, they're not part of the property that I'm buying. I am improving the Wallingford side at no benefit to me but cost, and I feel like I'm being asked to do above and beyond on something I'm making better than what it is right now. It's a parking lot, and I'm filling it and putting grass and putting trees, and now you're telling me to put a sign so I don't mow it, like, I think it just keeps going on and on. All it's just doing is costing me money when I don't have to improve that side at all.
You don't have to improve that side?
No, like, I could tear it down, and like, my development has nothing to do with the Wallingford side at all.
Of course it does.
It does not, sir.
You're taking out fill, you're putting in grass, you're dumping...
No, I'm putting in fill because that's what I want to do to make it better. I did...it's not...it's not needed for my development on the Merit side, is what I'm saying.
There is a rule, you talk, I listen, I talk, you listen.
Correct, yes, sir.
All your stormwater is coming down to Wallingford. All, 100%. You're going through the rain gardens, you're going this, it's coming down here. We have tried to protect the Wallingford.
Correct, yeah.
We're asking you to assist us in protecting Wallingford. To say you're not doing anything, you are doing something. You're running your stormwater in, that's...and putting fill in the area and topsoil, that's great. But the other thing that should have been done, this should have been done two weeks ago, so we don't have this argument tonight, and what it...all these issues should have been resolved, not 6 o'clock tonight. That's a problem.
Correct, yes, sir. You were one of them, correct, yeah.
So, you want to continue?
I was just wanting to just...yeah, I mean, I just...
You have a mouthpiece there you're paying a lot of money for.
I know, I'm paying all these people a lot of money.
So you'd probably let him take a run at it.
Yeah, okay. So I do have one...I guess it is a question, as far as her conditions of approval, you guys are saying you...if you vote yes, you agree with whatever her conditions are.
We vote with conditions of approval, you're stuck with them.
Okay.
The only other question is if a bond is necessary in this operation.
Well, after that comment, I think the bond is necessary, but I'm not ready to move forward with it. Erin polished this up and put it in front of us the way it's supposed to be. I want a table until next month, that's...that's my input to this.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion made to second this application until next month?
Mr. Chairman, have you heard?
Go ahead.
So, um...well, obviously, we got a 15-page analysis by your environmental planner. We responded as quickly as we could, and here we are, so...
Well, this is...this is what happens. You...you...you were here last month, you should have stayed...the next day should have been Erin's office to get this all resolved. That's the issue.
As soon as we received her comment letter, we scheduled the meeting with her immediately.
I know all...I know the whole story, I can...I can hear it on every application, okay? But the obligation of the applicant was should have been in her office to make sure she got you the information needed a week after the last meeting. And you're asking us to sit here tonight, you know, hours going on, because she didn't get you the report in time for you to didn't get back information, and you're dealing with it at 6 o'clock tonight. You don't know how it feels when a person comes in, oh, here's the report that was asked. What am I supposed to do with it at 7 o'clock at night in the front of the meeting? That's the problem. So, any other comments? Anyway. Motion's been made, it's been seconded.
I don't understand the motion, who made it, or anything.
The motion is...I made the motion to table this March or March 1st, all right? And then Erin's got the month to get everything together and give it to us in our packets so the night of the meeting, we can sit down and say everything has been addressed and answered, and we'll either approve it or deny it. Does that make sense?
I understand.
Okay.
To table the application.
Okay. Any other discussion?
And the second part is Ms. Phillips.
Any other discussion? Jeff? Is yes or no?
To discussion, no.
No, you're all set on discussion?
I'm good.
I'll call for a vote then.
Yes, to table.
To table.
Yes.
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 I assume, Mr. Chairman, we'd have to contact your planner, your environmental planner. I don't understand what additional information you're actually seeking. You just want the conditions of approval in written form? Is that my understanding?
Pretty much so. Would everything covered?
Yeah, all right.
And then they could clean up that issue with the...
Erin, you take care of them then, please. Because I've got to be at my desk at 7 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Ally?
Okay.
You did not vote on that, right?
I did vote, yes.
Well, then it made six votes, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6...
It should...she didn't need to vote. It's us...it's us five.
Okay.
Okay? Jeff, Mike, Debbie, and me. Okay, no new business, et cetera, et cetera. The only other issue going on is the violation situation. 67 and 69.
There's one thing... There's one thing after that, but yes.
Yes, what?
The one thing I want to clean up, it's on here, South Turnpike Road. We didn't vote to release that, so if you want to just release the violation at South Turnpike Road, it's not...
Is it taken care of?
Yeah, to my satisfaction, it's good enough.
Okay, so...
So it's number three and number four under violations.
All right. Is there a motion to release the violation on South Turnpike Road?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to release the notice of violations on South Turnpike Road.
Second?
Both violations.
Second.
Thank you.
Second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Going on to 67 and 69. The...Erin, do you want to deal with 69 first, that one being a smaller violation, or do you want to take them as together?
Sure, either one.
All right, if they're going together...
Sure, 69's easier, okay.
Okay, I saw something in here about hiring an engineer. Hiring an engineer.
You're probably better off doing theirs first because ours is going further now.
We'd rather not hire an engineer if possible, but if that's what...
Well, I've got a real problem with this situation. You don't have Segren here tonight, but I'd like to know why is it worse taking the material out than leaving it there? Can anybody give me an answer? Why is it, oh, it's better off leaving it there? Why is it better off leaving it there? I gather with this last rainstorm, half of Broad Meadow Swamp turned red with mud going out there.
Erin was out there, and she even said it wasn't as wet as she ever expected.
She told me it was drifting out in there. It wasn't bad, but it was drifting out in the swamp.
Well, we need wood chips put in, but...
Well, I...I'm going to tell you right now, I am not in favor of leaving this material there, okay? Now, if you want us to pull the commission, and if they're in favor of leaving it there, we'll continue on that route. I mean, that's...that's pretty much the issue going on, on it.
Basically, it was natural earth material, and Segren said maybe, you know, taking the material out might do more damage to the area with invasive plants and whatever else is just going to come in from what I understood out of it. And it would just be a big hole, and we'd have to plant it, and not be able to put equipment in there would be hard on us.
Well, how does the commission feel about it? Caroline? Microphone on?
Yes, thank you. I mean, I think that you have a problem with the hole, but if you can take the bad material out, it should probably be taken out.
It's already been confirmed that it's not bad material, and that the bricks that were put in there, which we didn't want bricks, obviously, the bricks that were put in there, as they start to dissolve into the soil, they're going to help the soil, the calcium and everything, everything that the bricks are made of is going to benefit, not...it's not a chemical issue or anything like that, so taking it out...
But they're not natural to the wetland area. And it has an effect on the area. Even if it's better to keep it there, it's still having an effect on the area.
It's not all wetland either. There's parts of it that aren't wetlands in our backyard. I mean, all we want is a backyard for our kids.
The part that's already been...
I'm not understanding, and now we have the issue because now it's moving over to planning and zoning too.
Okay.
That's why I said deal with that one first.
I'd prefer to see the wetland in upland review area restored.
I don't know how much of your...the area you said is not wetlands is up...is upland review area?
Basically, what she laid out was maybe 15 feet from our patio. Our house is in the upland review area, I believe, in the middle of my house.
Nothing has been done since the last time you were here.
Just the trenches being filled, like you would recommend, that was the only thing.
And prior, when our house was built, somebody had filled the area. We had the backyard, it was already a yard at a point in time. It seems like the brick is really the issue.
Well, the issue is when all them wood chips start to rot between the bugs and the stink, you're going to wish you had taken them out of there. I don't think that's going to be what you want, especially with young children running around. But I'm just wanting a vote here.
Debbie?
I think it should be removed, and I think it should be restored also to what it was.
Mike? I'm a little torn on this. My family shares a homeowners, I've expressed that before. Um, I do believe they were misguided. The expenses they're going through and going to continue to go through on this, I would say just leave it at this point, because I think they were misguided, and this never should have happened in the first place.
Jeff?
I was there today, and I walked into your backyard, and it's wet. You know, I kind of jumped from brick to brick, just kind of walking out there. My shoes were muddied when I came out, and I wasn't far back there. And I looked at the expanse that you've got, and it's just...I think you should remove it.
Erin?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to give me a moment.
What's that?
I need some time, just...
Don't even three months.
No, 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 I mean, I need to collect myself a little bit. I didn't...I didn't...I thought last time the commission was going to go forward this, I'm not...I'm on board. I always wanted it removed, but I got the impression the commission wanted to let it stay and had Segren work out all sorts of plans and this and that, so...okay. So I was not pleased when I went out there, last week or two weeks ago, whenever it was. The trenches had been filled in, but there was a little...in that process, there was a little spillage over onto the neighbor toward the east, I don't know, away, not...not the Louise's, to the 62, I don't know what the number is, toward the north, toward the golf course. Little spillage, like nine feet, so I told the jury, I says, "Bring it back, you don't want that neighbor getting mad at you, you got to do your property line here." And they did come in, they met with the two planners in our office to talk about the next step that would be happening with the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is called a fill-in excavation permit. Very expensive permit, and not only that, but you have to...they would have to hire an engineer. And what the planners said, yes, go ahead, they encouraged them, but they said, but you know what, that engineer's got to say, he's got to have a statement that said, "This design will not increase the flow, the drainage flow to anybody else." You know, to the east, to the west, to the north, it's going to...it's going to stay here. And they wanted to make sure of that. The planners wanted to make sure of that because you don't want to incur the wrath of neighboring properties and, you know, damaged neighboring properties. So that's where it was left with them, they haven't applied yet, they were told to get quotes, I guess, from engineers, and that was maybe a week ago, 10 days ago. This report, their report, came in, both families brought in the report Friday afternoon, which you got in your packets Friday night, and we're talking about it now. There is the added layer, I'm kind of glad you brought it up, because there's the added situation of the DEP. At the time, it was the DEP, back in the day, in 1978, the DEP put a conservation easement on the wetland, which is still there. Easements are forever. Conservation easement, they don't go away, so it's still there. And that'd be another hurdle for them to deal with with the state. We wouldn't do it, it's not...the town doesn't do that, the state would do that.
You're saying they would have to get the easement removed?
Something, some kind of deal worked out, something.
So again, shouldn't that have been a...shouldn't that have been something that you should have told us when we called to begin with then, that we had an easement?
Well, I had no idea...
Or anything?
I had no idea there was an easement until I...
We kept it wet meadow. I'm not trying to say it's not wetlands, I just want grass, you know, something mowable, somewhere I could go out back.
So you already heard, I don't know if you were here for the Choate hearing, I think you came in later, but we were here for two and a half hours of neighbors saying they've changed water flow on their properties. I don't think you want your neighbors to come back next year and say it's your fault that their lawn is flooding because you took up space in the wetland.
Correct, that's why we were going to leave a gap in the back.
So that is why you need an engineer to tell you about drainage flow. It's not about what you think will do with a gap somewhere, is that you... So, that is why you need an engineer to tell you about drainage flow. It's not about what you think will do with a gap somewhere, is that you filled in, it's like, it's like putting rocks in your toilet tank. It's not going to hold as much water. Therefore, it will flow into other neighbor, into your neighbor's yards, and that's going to be a thing that you're not going to want, because that's going to be lawsuits, and then you'll still have to do it. We're actually trying to save you that headache down the road and the headache of all your neighbors, because we'll end up coming back to this again and again, every time it rains. Every year, it's going to be an issue. So, we're trying to save you the trouble of, you know, the expense of putting in another forty yards of topsoil on top of that fill to make your mowable lawn. That's going to cost you money, and then next year, we're going to say, you messed up, we have to come back to this, take it all out, more money. So, we're trying to do you the favor now of dealing with this, not later on down the road when you've got a stack of lawsuits from every neighbor that, that abuts that wetland. Am I, are you understanding this?
Yeah, I would, I would like to have an engineer confirm what you're saying. You know, maybe, I, I believe my yard is the lowest point by several feet. Um, I, I don't think the water will ever get high enough to go into anybody else's lawn. I believe Aaron...
Can I ask a clarifying question, please? Um, I know that you want grass for the kids, but are you encroaching into the actual wetlands to achieve that? Because I think there's a disconnect here that...
We did, it's not something we meant to do by any means, that's why we called to begin with.
Sure, of course.
So, we definitely didn't want to.
Of course, but I think the problem is that you can't really change the wetland. It, if it isn't a wetland, it is a wetland, you're stuck with it. It's not going to be a grass, a flat grass backyard. As much as you want that, as much as maybe you can get that, and we, you can't really convert the wetland to, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like, I would love my, my backyard to be different too, but I can't just go back in there and change the topography of it and then say, you know, I mean, I, I understand that you're stuck. I, I have small children, I would want the same thing for them. I just feel like, this is like apples and oranges. Like, we can't say we're going to have a nice, flat backyard in a wetland area. It's just not feasible in my mind.
Why don't, why don't we table this till next month? And really, everybody searched their soul, and I, I hear Mike, I hear Caroline, it's all the different things. I'll go which way the commission goes. So, everybody has a stronger, or a definite opinion. Aaron will do some more work on it, and we'll go from there. I don't know how to handle Mr. Louise, though, that's the, the thing, because you don't have, you don't have the issue as much. I mean, what, you...
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we, we got the piles of brick on our yard, because, like I said, we wanted to remove the swale that now exists between our yards. If anyone was out there, you know, you could see the way that the grading, the natural grading of the land has been. My yard is higher on the, the south side, coming around wraps to the west. There's a house that's behind both of our properties.
Swales serve purposes.
Correct, but the swale wasn't ever there, okay? There was, their property was always lower, as Mike said. The swale is now created because they added fill, okay? So, the purpose was for the drainage, so the swale was not there as it wasn't originally, okay? So, that's why I have the fill in my yard that's been sitting there that I want to remove, if you guys aren't comfortable with the material, or I want to use it, because financially, obviously, it's right there, it's easier to do, and I filled the swale, and I put some topsoil, and I just grow some grass. So, if the material is not favorable, then yeah, I want to get rid of it.
And then, and, very good point taken, and then if they are successful in their plight...
Correct.
You wish you had the fill.
Correct, because, because I wouldn't want, I mean, I wouldn't want the swale. The swale was not there, obviously, you know, I mean, I think wetlands are, they're for drainage, they're for, obviously, swales serve purposes, but if the swale wasn't there, I mean, I'm creating a new purpose. I mean, I...
You, you survived without the swale there. In other words, your property just dropped off.
Yeah, correct, correct. Yeah, and I, I'd agree with Mike. Mike was definitely the lowest property, um, from a grading standpoint, for sure. You know, whether or not, you know, they filled the properties before they built the houses, and nobody knew, you know, how far they went. It happened, and Mike's yard was definitely the lowest point.
I don't have a problem with you removing the, the material, okay? If that's what you choose to do, okay? Because it's just the fill, that, that particular fill. Was there trees in, on your side?
Yeah, yeah, we had, we had removed trees, um, when we bought the house initially. I mean, there was a lot of trees.
That's not in this problem, though.
No, it was, it was in our violation. Um, yeah, and Sigrid had, you know, said that, you know, the removal of the trees didn't impact the wetlands. I think she had that in her write-up initially. Um, yeah, it was when we got the house, I mean, I'm sure a lot of them were involved in the microburst, as she was kind of explaining.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so, you know, we had removed stuff because it was falling, it was already on other stuff, and it was hazardous. So, and, you know, obviously, we wanted to extend a bit too, you know, so we had a little more sunlight back there.
Well, I, you either got a choice, wait till another month, probably it's not, it's a good month to get rid of it anyway. You've got dump trucks going in and out of there, it depends if the ground's frozen.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the conditions are favorable, obviously, I can have it removed. I mean, we also have, you know, some rotted wood and a stump that's been sitting in our yard since this all started, since we served the violation. They said, don't touch it. I mean, I want to remove that stuff too, obviously, it doesn't...
I have no problem, I have no problem. Commissioners, any problem with that?
No.
Aaron, any problems with him removing the fill and the wood?
Um, no, the piles of brick is fine, he can remove that. There are sitting like five...
He can get rid of the wood and the fill if he wants.
Five piles of brick. Little unclear where your wood is. I'm, I'm scurrying around here trying to find where this pile of wood is. Is it on your latest map, not on the...
No, it's not on the latest map. The latest map was more so showing just kind of like a grade, and the current grade versus the...
Is it on the December map?
It's on the last map, I believe, January.
Friday's map.
Okay, look, look...
Looking for the pile of wood or whatever.
It's on the west, it's on the western side, um, kind of near the tree line.
But he's not burying it, he wants to get rid of it.
What does it look like? I've been out there, I've been out there.
Yeah, you took a picture, it was a big stump, yeah, it was a very large tree that was half...
Oh, if it's that big stump, yes, you can get rid of that. I, I, I have to take another look at the swale, though. That was where I found the frogs. So, it's, it is within the state's wetland easement, so as far as, I don't, I'm not in favor of filling this swale, but I, I could go look at it. Most of your property's in the upland review area, so that, you took down trees and shrubs in that area, so it, I don't know if the commission wants what they want to do with that, but, um, yes, you can remove the five piles of brick, whatever, brick material, and the stump, and is there something else that is sitting there on the ground?
No, I think that's a...
Your firewood that we're using, but that's not what we want to remove, Lisa.
Yeah, we're not removing that.
That area with the swale is very wet.
Yeah, I mean, now it's, now it is truly, yeah, it's truly the lowest area.
Right, right.
Before, when they had the trenches, I mean, water collected in the trenches, the area wasn't as wet. I mean, now it's just solely the lowest area between both of our yards, so, um, the swale's doing what a swale would do. I mean, there's nothing really else to it.
I, as someone up here said, I think when, no matter what happens with their property, it's going to change that area, what they do. What the Jaces end up doing is going to change your swale area, is it not?
Correct, yeah.
So, maybe we just sit tight for that, for now, on the swale?
I mean, I, I would still like to kind of proceed with my violation, and, you know, obviously, whenever it involves their yard and, you know, they start getting to a certain point, of course, I could jump back in. I mean, that's, that's not an issue to me.
Okay. Let's do this, I, I would like to go. Okay, you can take the material out that you're requesting.
Sure.
We're going to postpone this till next month, but Aaron, put them first on the agenda. And I want you to have a positive program. I want you to have a positive answer regarding this issue.
Both, for both properties?
Well, no, he's, he may have his already gone by then.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
He, Mr. Louise may have his property resolved by then. This is, this is Mr. Jace.
Okay, so come up...
Is it leaving, is it leaving, is it staying? Is there a reason to, to keep it to stay? I mean, I want your, your professional opinion on this.
Okay.
For next month.
Okay, and so, but for the Louises, they come before the Choate hearing, right? Right, like seven o'clock is Louise, and then Choate?
Okay, why are they coming at all if, if, if he wants to take them out? If he wants to clean his property out, why is he coming at all?
Okay, I, I'm on board with taking the stump out and the five pile, or whatever, how many piles of fill it is, and he, but he's got other issues there that he did that's in violation.
Well, if, if that's... But if that's his intention, and it's going to go, if he, if he comes, he'll be first on the agenda as their team, that's all, that's all right too, but I guess it depends on what happens in the next thirty days, twenty-eight days.
Okay, so, so he might not have to come, you're saying, okay.
All right. Okay, anything else that's come before us tonight? We'll see you next month.
Do we have to reaffirm the violations?
Yeah, go ahead, re- reconfirm.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reaffirm the notice of violations on sixty-seven Schoolhouse Road and sixty-nine Schoolhouse Road.
And all others?
And all others.
Except four and five or something?
We already removed that.
All right, we already removed that. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second on both last, last two motions.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Deb. Hang, or, hang on a minute.
Yes.
What was the question?
I asked, who was the second on these last two motions?
I think it was, uh, Jeff.
Nekio said he was. Now, are you up just asking for a vote on the motion to adjourn?
It was unanimous on all of them, on both of them. It was unanimous vote for both of them.